We started right away. This is a public meeting and you're encouraged to speak out in a line of reasoning, support, opposition, or to pose an answer. We are -- will not have a consent agenda today. Everything will be presented. As far as the decisions of the Historic Zoning Commission, they are pursuant to the provisions of 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County by way of a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a tamely manner and all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decisions of the Historic Zoning Commission. With that, we have the approval of the minutes of June 19th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Okay. At this time then, we will go to new business.
If I may, I just would like to clarify what happened with the consent agenda. 2216 29th Avenue is off because the application is incomplete. 2008 18th is off the consent only at the request of the public. And 1501 Linden is off consent only at the request of staff. So since those items would just leave one item left on consent, we'd like to go ahead and present 1501 Linden, 1114 Chapel, and 2008 18th before beginning new business, or what was already planned for new business. And if I could take this opportunity to say, number K is also off the agenda. We'd like to make a few more changes and we'll discuss that next month.
On the minutes?
On the agenda. Number K on the agenda.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, Robin. So 1501 Linden will be presented?
1501 Linden, 1114 Chapel, and 2008 18th. So that there's opportunity for discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. The first item today is 1501 Linden Avenue. The house is a one-story brick Queen Anne-style cottage constructed circa 1910, maybe earlier. The house is on a double lot at the corner of Linden and 15th Avenue South. And the application today is to construct an outbuilding, a detached accessory dwelling unit. So that's a garage on the first story with an upper-story apartment. The height, scale, materials, and the general character of the building are compatible with the historic context, but there are a few issues that we'd point out, like to point out. The eaves need to be lowered to 10 feet in height, and the building needs to be located with a 10-foot rear setback in order to meet the DADU detached accessory dwelling standards. Those standards are written specifically into the ordinance, so it's not something that the commission would even have the authority to grant variance. And the applicant is okay with making those changes. There is one other item, one reason for discussion on this, and that's the front porch you see here. The DADU standards allow for one partial width open porch that is six feet deep or less. And staff finds that the understanding of partial width to mean roughly half the width of the building. The proposed porch would be nearly full width, 27 and 1/2 feet wide, whereas the building overall is 32 feet wide. Here's the side elevation that would be seen from the side street, 15th Avenue South. And this shows an approximate location of the building in the rear of the lot behind the house, along the rear alley. Staff recommends approval of the application with the condition that the building meet the 10-foot minimum setback, that the eve height be lowered to 10 feet, and that the porch width be reduced to half the width of the building. That's our recommendation. The restrictive covenant for accessory dwelling unit has been received, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. At this time, do you all have any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
I just have a question. The elevations that we're looking at don't have a dimension to the eve that I have found if I'm looking through.
I think it was on the screen. Can you?
Ten foot, one and three quarters. Ten foot, one and four and six feet. Ten foot, three. Nine foot plus one foot. Four to the bottom of the second floor. And it goes down to like a slither like 10 feet.
Okay. Yeah, I got 10 six, between 10 six and 10 eight. So it was close and sort of going with an average of grade. So that wasn't a big discrepancy there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? This item is up for public hearing. If we have those that would like to address the commission, please come before us. State your name and address.
It's the African. African first.
Oh.
Hi. We're Tom and Catherine Favreau. We're the property owners at 1501 Linden.
Good thing.
So first of all, we agree with the historic staff conditions for approval regarding eve height, the 10-foot setback, and the porch depth at six feet. That was just merely an oversight in the drawings. However, we do request that the porch be approved for partial width as indicated in the DADU standards rather than at half the width of the building as recommended by the historic staff. The DADU standard clearly indicates one partial width porch is acceptable. The historic staff in their June 19 recommendation to the board states that the established interpretation of the DADU standards is that a porch, half the width of the building overall, is an appropriate width. However, partial width porch does not have an established interpretation. To say there is an established interpretation for the porch width is a little misleading. Over the course of the two months that Catherine and I met with the historic staff, three times and submitted plans twice, throughout the face-to-face dialogue, the historic staff referred to the porch as "partial width" and never defined it as "half the width of the building." Not until July 2nd did the historic staff refer to the porch size as 50% in an email, which came to our surprise after we thought we had resolved all the design issues to the standard. So we find no 50% porch size definition, and it was never discussed during any of our meetings with the historic staff. That just never came up. So we were a bit surprised.
As 50%.
As 50%. The 50% reference in the July 2nd email was based on a staff member recollection from when the DADU standards were written. So is this a subjective determination, or is there some formal documentation to support it? That's kind of our question. DADU has specific design requirements that must be met. For example, as you know, the footprint shall not exceed 700 square feet. The maximum eve height is 10 feet. The setback has a 10-foot requirement. The roof height has a 20-foot, five-foot height requirement. And the porch depth has a six-foot requirement. However, partial width is not a specific design requirement. So partial width by definition is anything less than full. So if it was intended by the drafters of the DADU standard to limit porch width to half the width of the building, then the standard would have been written as such, but it was not. It simply says "partial width." So one of the things we wanted to add to support our request is that we would like you to note, as Sean indicated, that the property is on a double lot, that this detached accessory dwelling unit is very much subordinate to the principal structure. It's a large lot size. Architecturally, a large porch is in keeping with the Victorian style of the house. In fact, we would have preferred a full-length porch. If you look at the first picture that was put up, the porch on the primary structure, it's a big wraparound porch. So this would kind of be, a full-length porch would be in keeping with the structure of the style. So again, we'd like a full-width porch, but we're willing to compromise. But we also feel that 50% is not in keeping with the style of the house or the property. So finally, we would just request from the board that the porch be approved for partial width as indicated in the DADU standard, that the porch width standard be applied as written.
Did you have anything else, Catherine?
No. That's good. Well, thank you. Do you all have any questions of the property owner? Okay. If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain questions or clarifications or motions.
Is there a floor against it?
Pardon?
Is there a floor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission? It's on. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to? Oh, that saved me from opening the public hearing again. I'm sorry. I was getting the swing of this again here. I apologize. All right. Questions? Clarifications?
Robin, what's your response to their argument on the partial versus half?
The porch isn't, allowing porches isn't even in the DADU standards. It's already something that's sort of extra that you've allowed people in the past. You haven't approved any that are more than 50% so far. In talking with the people who drafted the standards, that was their recommendation, that it not be more than 50%.
What language is he referring to when he keeps saying a partial porch?
It's in the, it's italicized information in the standards. It's not the actual language. Adding a porch is not in the actual ordinance. So already adding a porch is something extra.
Does the ordinance prohibit a porch?
It does not.
Okay. So it's not actually adding something that the ordinance doesn't allow. It's just simply not addressed.
Correct.
And I think it was, am I right that it was added because otherwise arguably that square footage should be considered for the other footprint requirement? So it was a concession not designed to be more restrictive?
That's correct.
So I think the question, it sounds like, is for this concession, how much do we want to provide? Is that essentially the question? You're looking at me funny.
Well, I'm just trying to understand. So what you're saying is that the porch is part of the square footage that the footprint of the building?
I think, I think the reason this italicize, as I understand, the reason the italicized information exists, this one partial width open porch is six feet deep or less is not included in the footprint calculation. The reason that language was added is because there was some concern that if you didn't have that language, then you'd have to count a porch as part of the 700 feet or 550.
I see.
So it's meant to help the applicant.
Okay.
It's meant to not penalize them for having a porch.
Okay.
So then I think from that, we have to decide how much porch is appropriate.
Okay. You're right. Any other clarifications?
I have a question about the six feet depth. Is it only in that italicized statement that the six-foot depth is a?
The six feet is in our design guidelines.
For porches as a maximum?
As a minimum, so that they're actual usable porches. We found that anything less really reads more like a fake porch because it's not really deep enough to have a chair or anything on it.
Right. But we're actually suggesting a reduction in the size of the porch. Is that in order to meet the intent of that italicized statement?
Is that a reduction or a?
The plans show the porch at six foot three. The italicized language says six feet, six feet deep or less.
So the standards require, just in the guidelines, for porches six-foot minimum. So we'll have usable porches. Yet this concession, I think, to allow people to have porches without counting them toward the square footage of the accessory dwelling unit, the language states that it should be no more than six feet.
Yeah, I think it's just distinguish between porches on a house and porches on an outbuilding. I'm not saying it makes, it all makes sense together that way, but it just seems.
I think the takeaway is you need a six-foot deep porch.
I think, to me, I don't even get hung up on the six feet. I think it's, we've decided we're going to allow porches and there should ought to be some concession there and not penalize somebody for having a porch. We just need to put whatever those parameters are on the porch. And it sounds like from Robin that in the past, we've said there can't be more than 50% in width. I don't necessarily feel strongly that that should be that way. I just, it's precedent to some degree.
Part of the discussion here, I think, in thinking less in terms of the specific, we have to deal in terms of specific guidelines and applicants are bound by those and designed to those. Is the intent, I believe the intent here is that outbuildings are just that. They're outbuildings. They're subordinate in as many ways as possible, that they can be. And that while this concession was to allow for, if you're going to put usable space in a garage, having a porch or having some level of comfort, you know, shielding for the sun, adding some architectural detail to it to break down the scale of, albeit an already small and limited outbuilding, is probably the intent here. And that the limitation on, any limitation on porch was just to add a limitation from somebody putting, you know, doing a 270-degree wraparound porch and then a garage on one side. And, you know, this is an exaggeration to the point, but that's what I think intent is in terms of consideration of whether 50% is too much, not enough, or just right.
And I'm thinking 50, it may not be based, it may not need to be based on a particular percentage. To me, the stuff that really drives the outbuildings is, like Ben's getting, to the subordinate nature of it. So I think however we look at it ought to be contextual. And I guess most likely, most contextual primarily to the primary structure and then maybe the neighborhood outbuildings as well. So the argument that if you've got a really big front porch on the, on the house, then maybe there's more leeway for a bigger front porch on the outbuilding, that kind of makes sense to me.
All right.
I guess it seems to me, since the language under the DADU doesn't address porches, the way this is written, it's, it seems to me that the intent is to keep, keep the footprints relatively small, like you were saying here, and subordinate to the main structure. But it doesn't say you can't have a 10-foot deep porch, and it doesn't say you can't have a full-width porch. It simply states that a partial width open porch that is six feet deep or less qualifies to be not included in your square footage. And thus, the question, I guess, is how many square feet is the, is the footprint without the porch?
It's pretty close to 700. I think it's 690 something, 696, 698.
I think you're right. The statement in italicized is simply memorializing other decisions and precedent. I don't think it means that we can't go beyond that if we think it makes sense in particular circumstance.
Right.
Okay. Are there any other comments? If not, do I hear a motion? Are we ready?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation with an amendment to condition number three to allow the porch to be the width as shown in the drawings.
All right. We have a motion. Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Do they need a statement of why the recommendation is changed, a justification for why the recommendation? Do they need a statement of why the motion should be taken?
This, this next case is an application, the address is 1114 Chapel Avenue, and the application is to construct, in addition to an existing accessory building behind a non-contributing house, the application will add an upper half-story with stairs and a door, and a pair of dormers. And the upper story, or the structure overall, I should say, is not going to be used as an accessory dwelling unit. I won't go into too much detail because this one was originally on consent, but with the addition, the height and scale of the building will still be subordinate to the house and compatible with historic buildings. The new roof and siding sections will match the existing materials. Staff will need to approve the window materials administratively, generally wood, aluminum-clad and fiberglass clad have been found to be appropriate, and vinyl has not. Similarly, staff would approve the door material, and there wood, fiberglass, and steel have been found to be appropriate, but again, vinyl is not. Staff recommends approval of the addition to the existing outbuilding with the condition that the window and door materials are approved by staff. The applicant's here, but if you don't have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions of the staff?
No.
All right. Of course. The applicant would like to come forward in the next second. Okay. All right. Are there any comments or questions? If not, we'll hear a motion.
Move approval based on staff recommendations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is 2008 18th Avenue South. It's an application to demolish an existing addition and an existing outbuilding, and to construct a new rear addition that contains an attached garage. Here are some additional photographs on the site. The arrows here are pointing to the addition that is to be demolished, and the photo on the bottom right is the outbuilding that will be demolished. And this photo here, I just wanted to show you that the applicant is proposing to alter this window opening on the top-left photo in the bay, and staff is recommending that the window opening remain as is. Here is the site plan. The addition meets all base zoning setbacks, and it steps in appropriately from the sidewalls of the house. On both sides, after the initial inset, the addition steps back out to line up with the protruding bays on the historic house. So in other words, the addition after stepping in, steps back out and is wider than the main walls of the house, but no wider than the existing bays, which staff believes is appropriate and meets the design guidelines. Here are the elevations for the sides. The addition will match the height of the historic house, and staff finds that the height and scale meet the design guidelines. The proposed materials include horizontal lap siding with board and matton in the gable fields of the second story, stone foundation, brick chimney, screened porch, and aluminum-clad windows. Staff asks to review material samples and all materials that are not called out on the drawings. The addition's proportion and rhythm of openings meet the design guidelines. As was mentioned earlier, the applicant is proposing to alter the window openings on the north side bay, and staff recommends that the original window openings remain. Here is a roof plan. The addition's gabled roof form will largely match the pitch of the existing gabled roof. However, on the north facade, a portion of the roof will be flat. Typically, roofs should have a slope of at least 612 or should match the slope of the existing historic house. Staff finds this flat roof that's proposed acceptable in this instance because the roof form will be inset approximately nine feet from the line of the historic house, and the roof is towards the back of the addition. At most, this roof form will be minimally visible from the street. Here are the front and the rear facades. Again, there is an attached two-car garage. While attached garages are generally not appropriate in this historic neighborhood, the commission has allowed for them when they are located at the basement level, located at the rear of the home, and located in the general vicinity of historic outbuildings. And staff found that this proposed attached garage met all of those criteria. So in summary, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: staff approve the trim material, a stone sample, brick sample, window and door specifications, and the roof material color. The siding have a maximum reveal of five inches. The window openings, the window openings on the left north side bay remain unaltered. And four, the utilities be placed in the rear of the property or in a side facade beyond the midpoint. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here to answer questions as well.
Melissa, the garage, is that facing an alley?
It is. It does. It faces an alley and its access via an alley.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a note on the south elevation under the title. It says, "All existing windows to be replaced with new wood aluminum-clad units to match existing size and style." Typical unless noted, and I noticed in the staff's recommendation that it specifically identified some windows that the architect or designer had called out to be enlarged, but that, I don't know if that note was an error or certainly I think we need to make note of that in our, in the application. Or I don't know if that has been addressed, but I wanted to point that out.
Well, two things there. One is, there are two, the applicant is proposing to alter two existing window openings. One is on the, on the top, on the south elevation, there's an arrow pointing to it. That window is going to be enlarged. In that case, staff found that to be appropriate because it's behind the bay, it's at the back of the house, and, you know, the proportions of that opening that's being proposed seem to meet the design guidelines, and we felt that that was a relatively minor change to the historic house. On the north elevation, where the arrow is pointing here, they're proposing to alter the window openings of the bay, and staff, staff thought that the changing that window opening was, did not meet the design guidelines because the proportions of the opening that's being proposed doesn't meet historic proportions, and that's a much more visible window, and the window opening there seemed to be original. In terms of replacing all the windows, because this is a conservation overlay, you know, staff doesn't, that's not something that's, that the commission reviews in a conservation overlay replacement of the existing windows. But not the window. But when you get into enlarging or altering the window openings, that's considered partial demolition, so therefore we do review it.
Show noted my confusion in the conservation versus whether we keep them or they can be replaced is, I was mistaken. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for staff?
Less on the north elevation?
Mm-hmm.
The horizontal windows, is that, I really don't remember seeing those being approved by staff before, or?
On the, on the addition, they haven't approved before. I mean, typically when it's, in this case, those horizontal windows, it's hard to tell in the application, in the elevation, but there was setback at least nine feet, I believe, from the wall of the house, and they're towards the back, and so we didn't feel that they would be all that visible and have much of an impact. In general, staff has felt that when, when windows are in a location that kind of further back from the historic house and less visible, that more utilitarian-sized windows and irregular-sized windows can be appropriate, and we felt these were.
The, on the north elevation, is the horizontal window that's in the gable field, that is original?
That is there, yes. Yeah, I mean.
Speak for the architect.
Yeah, the architect's probably answered, but right now, the, the opening is there, although it's covered up.
I see.
So that is, on the existing, on the existing structure, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Man, just off the cuff, I, the south elevation seems fairly compatible with the existing building and probably the neighborhood. The north elevation, again, to me, just seems a little not compatible. Is that, are you comfortable? Obviously, you are, but.
Well, there are a couple of things going on. One, I mean, right now, the south elevation faces a vacant lot. That lot, the commission approved a new structure on that, so that will be developed eventually. But the south elevation is much more visible. On the north elevation, we were okay with the, I guess, more contemporary-style design or less compatible design, mainly because the portion, besides the porch, which is the one-story gabled area, the rest of that's kind of pushed back from the the one-story gabled area, the rest of that's kind of pushed back from the sidewall of the house, I believe it's nine feet. So, there's less of an impact than it maybe it looks from, from the elevation because it is not at the same plane as the historic house. And I think what you're referring to, I think what's kind of giving you that view there is that flat roof because the tie-in to the gable is a pretty typical tie-in even though there's windows there, but the flat roof portion, again, it's not something the commission typically likes to see. We usually like to see at least a 612 slope, but staff found it to be okay in this instance because of, we believe it would not be as visible.
Okay. All right. At this time, the property owners too would like to address the commission. All right. If you'll come forward and give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Terry Bates, I'm the architect for, for the project and we would like to ask for your consideration on the, changing the window on the north bay. That currently is a bathroom and is remaining a bathroom and the reason for wanting to change that is just the sightlines from the street and the adjacent house. We feel that pulling the window up makes it a little bit easier and more private in the bathroom, so, and we tried to, we're, we are proposing to use a window that is period for the house and a style window that's already existing on the house, so we don't feel that it will be drastically changing the architecture. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
Sorry. Is there a question?
No, I said, is there anyone else? There is a question, but is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Okay. All right. If not seeing any, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for discussion.
I'll get something started here. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to second-guess staff, but so I'll, given that, I've kind of voiced my reservations about one, one of the elevations, but based on staff's response to my questions, I'll recommend approval based on staff recommendations.
All right. We have a motion?
Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
Robin, have, have we approved a flat roof in this sort of context before?
I think we need a second before discussion.
I'll second that motion and ask my question.
We have. When it's really far to the back, an inset the way it is, the other issue with it being a flat roof is that it helps keep the massing down. If we were going to ask for a gabled roof, that would have made that, what's a fairly large addition, even more massive. So, since it's so far to the back, it's part of the addition, not a part of the original house, not the entire addition, we thought it was appropriate.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second. Any other questions or clarifications? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 731 McFerrin.
Sorry to keep you waiting. All right. This project is an outbuilding that was constructed without building or preservation permits. Staff was unable to issue an after-the-fact permit since the project doesn't meet the design guidelines. When this violation was discovered, staff also noticed that plastic siding was being used in the previously approved side addition. Because plastic is not an appropriate siding material, staff can also not approve this alteration that was constructed without a permit. Staff worked with the applicant on potential solutions, however, the applicant would prefer to ask you to keep the, the structure and the plastic as it is today. The exact height of the structure is unknown as the drawings are not to scale, but based on rough measurements and comparisons to the house next door, which is approximately 18 feet tall from grade, the outbuilding appears to be approximately 16 feet from grade at its tallest point. The footprint is 384 square feet. The height is inappropriate since the outbuilding is close to the same height as the primary building next door, which is within the height range of historic buildings in the immediate vicinity and is highly visible from two public right-of-ways. Typically, outbuildings are subordinate to primary buildings, so the project does not meet 2B, A, and B. Because this is an outbuilding on a corner lot, it should be located towards the center of the lot and the interior lot line where historic buildings, outbuildings were located. On number one, it shows approximately where it's located now and number two shows a more appropriate location. The setback of homes on this block of Chickamauga are between 32 and 34 feet from the front property line and this building is only 10 feet from the front property line. Therefore, the project does not meet sections 2BC and F and 2BI2. The plastic siding that is installed from the top of the fence to the top of the previously approved side addition is not an appropriate material for cladding and has been disapproved by the commission in the past. The addition was approved as an open-air structure with outsides. Staff recommends disapproval of the current outbuilding and of the plastic sides added to the pre-approved side addition. Staff recommends that the structure and the plastic siding be removed within 30 days of the hearing. Staff finds that the projects do not meet the guidelines in terms of location and materials, specifically sections 2BA, B, C, D, F, and I for the Greenwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And do you have any questions for staff?
All right. This item is open for public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission? Please come forward, station name and address.
Good afternoon. This is Kay, I'm Kay Brinkman. I'm the owner of the pharmacy where we're talking about, 731 McFerrin Avenue. First of all, I was not aware that I had to have a building permit for building out the pergola in the back of the lot because the main address is on 731 McFerrin. First, and also looking at it, the way where it is built, it is within the, the setback guidelines for the building, so that's why we started building it. The, the little bit of plastic screen which you see on the picture is just used a little bit in the wintertime and it's, it's barely visible, but I can definitely make a change in that and put something else on there, but will be approved.
Okay.
So, all I'm asking for is getting the approval to, for the building permit.
Okay. Do you have any questions of the property owner? Thank you so much. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain comments.
I think one of the issues here is that the use of the property doesn't really match with the parcel lines and so as the, the property functions, that's really where this sits on the face of the street on, from Chickamauga is, it's the front to some people, but it's their rear. Have we encountered stuff like this in the past, Robin, where sort of the redevelopment, especially on a corner, is, is the length of the block, so when you turn the corner, it doesn't all, doesn't necessarily have the same rhythm?
I don't, I can't recall anything quite like this. Usually, it's another structure, you know, a full building that they want to put there. We haven't had anything with an outbuilding up front with residential buildings.
So, any kind of outbuilding you think here would be inappropriate just because of the, everything else on that street is, is the primary building?
So, the outbuilding was constructed without a permit? And the addition, side addition was approved, permitted and approved, but contains plastic that is not appropriate?
Yes, it was approved with open sides, no cladding on the sides at all. And yes, the structure was constructed without building or preservation permits.
And the side building, did it come, the side addition had to come before this board or...
It did.
I think there are some unique characteristics here. I would have, I would feel very differently if this was the middle of the block and somebody bought the house behind them and then wanted to put an outbuilding right next on each and has a residential house on each side, but it is the corner and it's a commercial So, I, I'm struggling a little bit with the transition and it being commercial and maybe it wasn't historically, this end of the corner wasn't necessarily commercial, but the other end on West Eastland was and this is an extension of that and the fact that it's on a corner and there is some kind of transition there and it's contiguous in the development along everything on McFerrin. I don't know if this is ideal, but I would like us to think about how to treat that and I'm not sure we should have a hard and fast rule that you absolutely can't do anything in the back except another house in a, in a, in a context like this.
Well, and I, with that, I said, I don't know the answer. I'm just, I think it's worth some discussion if anybody's got ideas.
Let us finish our discussion and then, thank you.
I'd say because it's commercial and the back is on alley 1002, I think I can read that, there's some various, I think there's some common ways that this lot would be developed commercially within the context of residential directly adjacent to it and I think putting, treating Chickamauga as an alley, which is what putting an outbuilding on it does, is a move in the wrong direction.
Robin, did, did you state that you had talked with them about things that could be done and the suggestions were made to bring it back down to what had been approved previously?
This structure has not been approved. The structure with the plastic siding was approved by the commission. The structure on Chickamauga was never approved.
Oh, okay.
We did try to work with them on solutions to correct the violation, but they did not want to do that. They would like to ask for you to keep it as-is.
Okay.
What do you think the solutions are?
Quite frankly, I think it should be moved up to location number two.
So, it's not the nature of it being an outbuilding so much as the location?
The location based on what it is. If it were a true building, of course, it'd be very appropriate right on the corner, but since it is an open-air outbuilding, we didn't feel like it was appropriate to be right next to residential buildings, especially since it's not subordinate in any way because of its height.
The, Robin, the applicant stated that it was their understanding that the building did meet the setback requirements and, and could you address the setback requirements as they relate to the base zoning as well as the historic zoning?
The bulk zoning requires that it be three feet off the property line. Our design guidelines require that outbuildings be in the location where outbuildings historically were located, which was at the back of the lots.
The three feet, is that a rear setback or front setback or side setback?
It depends on if there's an alley or not and garage doors, so it depends on a lot of different factors. In this case, it would be three feet, I would assume.
It would be three feet what?
Three feet.
This is, this is a single lot, single parcel. The dash line is, is an old property line, correct?
Correct, right. So, we weren't really looking at it from the hard and fast setback rules of the bulk standard, but the design guideline requirements that outbuildings be, I can't think of the right word, but subordinate to primary buildings and be in the right location. And this one's too tall and it's the wrong location.
So, what, in essence, what you're saying, if this came before the board today, you wouldn't, you would seek, you would recommend disapproval?
Correct.
It is before the board. Oh, you mean, you mean it.
As a new structure.
As a new structure.
Right.
Any more discussion? I'm just going to invite the applicant up. He wanted to say something and invite him up to speak his piece.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. We'll reopen the public hearing if you'll come forward. Again, if you'll identify yourself, please.
There was mentioned that the building next door is residential, which is not, not the case. It is also a commercial building and I'm also the owner of that. It is not an alleyway what goes in between there because we have a restaurant there that is an exit for the parking area, so there is no alleyway what goes in between those two. That's all my, on my property also.
Okay.
It's just an exit. The reason why it was built in the back of that lot is because that lot is sloping in such a weird angle there, so we build a tremendous, we build a deck there, so we have a level, a level area to put tables on and because that deck was there, that's why the decision was made to put a pergola above that. The reason why we had to have the pergola is because we have a lot of outdoor seating and sometimes we're, thank God, very successful with the restaurant and we're trying to keep it like that, but a lot of times if it starts raining, then we have a, then we have a tremendous mess on our hand and then now the people have a place to go to. And otherwise, we definitely have a lot, a big problem every time it starts raining. The plastic tarp is only being used on the side in the wintertime when it gets extremely cold. That's the only time the plastic is up in that little section, which is hardly visible, barely visible in this picture. Of course, it is, it got a little bit dirty over the wintertime, but that's normally if it's clear, then it's, it's barely visible that it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, I have a question. I assume that this is going through all other departmental reviews, zoning, zoning administrator, has the zoning administrator identified any additional variances? And, and this may not be relevant to our conversation, but it's, it's important because from a parking perspective and, and other issues that I know have been raised as a concern in this area. I know that, I think the zoning ordinance distinguishes between outdoor dining areas, covered outdoor dining areas as they relate to parking and so on and so forth and, and this property keeps expanding in terms of its uses to some degree. I mean, you know, or, you know, and I was just curious, for the applicant's sake, if nothing else, that this is going through the full zoning administration.
I don't know what other departments have done, but I could certainly check on that.
I guess I'm still struggling with, is this really the back of the property? I mean, if you look at what we have on the screen, that dotted line is not, I mean, it's all one parcel, right, the entire thing? Historically, it was not. Trying to think back and how we've looked at larger parcels in the past, I guess we don't always go back and look at what it used to be and say, "Well, you got to stay within this footprint because you consolidated the lots 10 years ago." I think this was just consolidated, so that may be different, but...
Well, in this case, it's not what the lot used to be, but it's what the neighborhood is now. All those buildings are residential in design, even that's not what their real use is and they face Chickamauga.
Yeah, okay. I get it.
Robin, I've got a question about the plastic. So, plastic is never allowed. So plastic is never allowed.
That's correct.
On an overlay?
In a highly visible area, which this is, being a corner lot.
So it's contextual on this particular situation?
The only time it's been allowed is in cases where it's, the deck is maybe in the back and is completely invisible from all streets.
So therefore during, like he said, the wintertime, then he would have no other option to protect his clients?
Sure, he could come back and seek an application. He could submit an application for, to put siding on it.
And it'd have to be other than plastic?
Correct.
No plastic whatsoever?
Correct.
He could do doors and large length windows and things like that.
Doors, windows, lap siding, panels, brick, stone, lots of options.
I think I'll make a motion. But first, I'd like to say the pharmacy is the best hamburger joint in Nashville, so I appreciate it and go there often. But that said, I think, I don't know that, given the staff recommendation and how the building does not meet so many aspects of the guidelines, how we can vary from the staff recommendation today. So I'll recommend or make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion to accept staff recommendation is approved.
Just, just to be clear, the motion was to approve staff recommendations, which is the disapproval of the applications in its entirety?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's correct. And could I ask a clarification for the sake of the applicant? I don't know if he's here still or not. Yeah. The location was one aspect of the recommended disapproval. So hopefully the staff can work with the applicant and perhaps bring something back as an alternative.
Absolutely.
I've owned these buildings for eight years. All I want to do is bring the neighborhood up. I settled the whole now for three and a half years till I finally found a good rental quarter and then it became a business partner. All we want to do is bring up the neighborhood and make it better. And we have been extremely successful in making the entire neighborhood a lot better. Since then also, I mean, it's been historical, it became like that. And we will continue to make a lot of improvements in the neighborhood. And that's our goal and that's what we're striving for. And we'll do whatever we need to do to make it, make it nice and successful. But of course, we have, yeah, I mean, the deck there and we have some, some guidelines we maybe have to vary a little bit on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm on the neighborhood and so, yeah, they have known really well for the neighborhood.
Many of us have eaten there. Good job.
Okay. And just around the corner are the best cocktails in town. Although this place may have the best cocktails in town now, haven't tried it yet. This, I hate to do this, I feel like the weather person giving news about rain all the time. This is another one that's going to be pretty tough because it's people who've tried very desperately to do the right thing and improve the neighborhood as well. The applicants initially received approval for a rooftop addition that included a flat pergola-type structure over rooftop bar, but have since decided that shade is needed for the employees and to meet health codes. The applicants came back with a request to increase the height of the addition, which was approved. And this image shows the addition that was approved by the commission without the pergola. Since then, the applicants installed a tent without a permit and so are requesting a retractable awning to replace the tent. The pergola previously approved does not really meet either of their needs. Now that the previously approved addition with the increased height has been constructed and can be seen from the street, staff is concerned that it does not really meet the design guidelines. So to allow further alterations to what was initially approved increases the addition's incompatibility with the neighborhood and will set a dangerous precedent for future rooftop requests. The current additions were approved even though they do not meet the design guidelines because the building is not very deep and because of the gable roof form, which is unusual for the district. The design guidelines require that the additions to historic buildings should be minimal. If approved, the addition will cover the entire flat roof of the north building from the ridge to the back of the building. So again, will be highly visible from the street. The approved alterations, additions are already visually jarring, that's language from the design guidelines, in contrast, again, language from the design guidelines, with the historic character of the building and the overlay. The awning will have a slight slope, unlike the pre-approved pergola, and will be highly visible from the street, further bringing the additions out of character with the overlay. The addition also does not meet the required setbacks of 30 feet. The health code requirement is easily addressed with a small box-type structure on the bar in the vicinity where drinks are mixed. Health codes does not require that the entire bar be covered. However, the awning is also desired to provide shade for the employees. The awning will be retractable, but there's no mechanism for monitoring whether or not the awning is retracted each evening at sundown. And since this is a restaurant, the awning will likely be extended the majority of the time. Staff recommends disapproval of the awning based on the fact that the awning will be visually jarring, will contrast with historic district, does not meet the setback requirements for rooftop additions, and when combined with the additions already approved, will not be minimal as required by Section 6H of the design guidelines for rooftop additions. Staff recommends that the unpermitted tent be removed within 15 days of the commission's decision.
All right. Do we have any questions of Robin before we open the public hearing?
Robin, if the awning was translucent or a glass top, would that have any bearing on how you looked at it?
No, it would still be highly visible. One of the things that the gentleman before this case talked about was that plastic, which is horizontal and not, which is vertical and not even horizontal, that it got dirty and that made it more visible. And I think that would just be the same thing with a translucent. Plus, awnings should be of fabric and not plastic.
Okay, all right. Deciding myself for the public hearing, are there those in the audience that would like to address us? Come forward, give your name and address, please.
Hi, Manuel Zeitlin, architect, 516 Hagan Street. We're the architects on this highly, what was the word you used? Shocking, disturbing addition. I would, I would like to, just for the record, I believe that that photograph was probably taken from the plaza of the arena, not from the public right of way.
It's taken from the sidewalk.
It is taken from the sidewalk because I can really see it when I was down there at night. But anyway, two issues. One is the health department's requirement, they came back and they said you can't serve drinks because they're not covered. The other issue is the bartenders have been out there in the daytime making, you know, working at the bar uncovered and they're frying. So it's trying to come up with a solution that solves both those, you know, real needs. So the owners, you know, without, again, you know, I think without talking to us even, just put a tent out there because it's a temporary type solution, not, it's not a permanent addition to the historic structure. And in my mind, I don't see really necessarily what's wrong with that in terms of the Secretary of Interior guidelines. We just today got a letter back from Guy Lapsley with the Secretary of Department of Interior on the Trolley Barn project we're doing for Pine Wood Social. And he approved temporary cabanas that are not attached to the building that are basically the same kind of construction, awning frame construction, canvas covering, so that people can sit out by a pool in the shade. And, you know, from the Secretary of Interior standpoint, that was acceptable because it's not a permanent addition to the building, not because it changes the way you perceive it, because when we're long gone, those awnings will be probably gone. And in relation to an historic structure, that's sort of relatively insignificant, is our opinion. But let's say we put the tent aside, awning, well, I guess I'm asking you that, that because the awning is in nature to consider that that is an appropriate solution. I mean, because it's temporary in nature, the tent structure they have there, that that may be an appropriate solution. But let's say it's not an appropriate solution, then the idea of a retractable awning, meaning that it is either retractable or it's out, again, seems like a reasonable solution because when it's not needed at nighttime, for example, you know, it would go back. But in daytime, when the sun's out and issue, it could, it could be out. So it seems like it's a reasonable solution. It's not changing the character of the building and it's addressing the needs to protect the people that work there from the sun.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions at all or? Okay, thanks.
Anyone else that would like to address the commission on this matter? All right, close the public hearing and open for discussion. I'll open it. I know that we dealt with the tent concept once before, I think. And when we talk about a temporary, we're talking about it coming down at some point and only be using for special events kind of things. I am correct in that. And so the temporary is not, is not a permanent solution to being there.
Correct.
All the time.
Correct.
Okay. The other is, in the proposal of the awning, and because the bar has to be covered and they're talking about taking it back in at night, well, is that not still a get code if the bar's uncovered in the evening?
If they add a little box at the bar where they're mixing the drinks, they only, health codes only needs the, that one little area where the drinks are mixed to be covered. It doesn't need the whole area to be covered. But they would like the whole area to be covered for the bartenders.
Sure, sure, okay, all right.
In terms of the definition of temporary structure, that's a Metro determination, not a Metro Historic Zoning Commission or staff determination that it would be erected and removed every 30 days.
Correct.
That's a solution if they wanted to get a permit every 30 days to be temporary, that would be the only way to comply with Metro.
The awning is not temporary.
But if, back to the tent.
The tent is technically a violation because there is no permit for it one way or the other.
All right.
I think, I think the question, Ben, though, is that if, if they could get a permit for the tent as a temporary structure, that they would have to remove it every 30 days?
It wouldn't come before us because it would get taken down and a new permit would be applied for and it would go back up for the next 30 days. That's their prerogative.
To, to a certain extent. I know this is, not to put her on the spot because it's been a long time since we talked about that, but if they continuously did that, that would be an issue too, that that's not the intent.
And you all forgive me, I don't see it defined. I was looking for a definition of temporary in the zoning code. I don't see it defined in the zoning code. I know it is defined in the building code, which is Title 16, and I do not have a copy of that with me right now. But I'll be happy to look at that and get you some guidance on what could or could not be. But for purposes of this particular case, it's my understanding that there is no permit even for the tent that is currently existing. So it's a matter of whether or not you all want to approve an existing, what is technically an existing violation with the tent even being there. Or in the alternative, potentially approve or disapprove the proposed solution, which would be the awning. And that would just be a question of whether or not you all found that that's appropriate.
Well, but what is before us is the retractable awning.
Right.
Okay. And the removal of the tent, which is a violation.
Okay.
I thought we didn't, the tent wasn't our jurisdiction. I thought if it's temporary.
It is. We frequently, frequently review temporary tents, but this one didn't receive a permit from the codes department. So it is technically a violation.
So our guidelines cover even temporary tents?
If it truly were temporary, but there's no application for this, we have no idea what the intent was supposed to be. I'm assuming they meant for it to be temporary because they're applying for the awning. But there's no permit for it, so it needs to come down.
Robin, why do you think it would be visually jarring to have the awning there? I mean, A, you'd have to assume you're going to see it. And I'm not really sure how much of you would see, how much of it you would see from the street level. And B, it's not like a huge thing and, can you walk me through that?
Sure. If you can see where the tent is, the awning would be in the same location. Certainly wouldn't be quite as tall, but it would be...
But it's, it's basically flat. It didn't...
No, it has an angle to it and it'd be highly visible.
From where?
From the street, from the sidewalk. This picture is taken from the sidewalk.
From which sidewalk?
The sidewalk across the street.
But it is visually jarring a, is it, it's not a defined, I mean, what is visually, how is visually jarring defined?
It's not defined. That's up to you to decide. We were looking at what's already there. All of what's there is already, doesn't meet the design guidelines, really. And so this is their third time to come back and yet ask for more to be placed on top of the roof. And so staff thought it was inappropriate because it's so highly visible.
You mentioned that it would, you would be concerned about setting a precedent or, I mean, I guess rooftop dining and bars are desirous. And so you don't want to see these awnings everywhere. Is that kind of another issue?
Right, and especially this close to the front of the building. Because again, the guidelines require that additions be set back 30 feet. This one's nowhere close to that because it physically can't be. But we don't want to, in all those cases where they could be, we don't want to see them there.
Is that 30 feet from the street?
From the front of the building.
The awning would be, how, how far back do you think?
It wouldn't be possible.
I think, I think even what is built there right now have got some compromises.
Yes, exactly.
Could I get a clarification? The, the existing tent, this body has no jurisdiction over. Is that correct? It's an unpermitted structure in that Metro should go out and tell them they have to remove this. And that regardless of what we decide...
Well, it depends on whether it's permanent or not. And since there's been no application, we don't know what the intent is.
Typically, they would have to go through the building department, the codes department, to get a temporary permit for a temporary tent. Again, I wish I had Title 16 with me, so I can't quote you the language there, but that's my understanding that they would have to get that, that kind of a structure permitted through the codes department. Codes would typically be the one that were, would be, would be the department charged with enforcement of not obtaining a building permit or the required permit for the tent. So to the extent, normally, not normally, I don't know that this body would see that kind of thing because typically it would be enforced by codes. But I don't know, given the fact that it is a historic structure, I think you have some, some role to play with regard to what is appropriate on that structure. I think we'd be potentially a different conversation if we had a permitted tent. And I think it would be different because I think that would flag the Historic Zoning Commission to weigh in on the, on the issuance of the permit from the very beginning of the permitting processing. But because that didn't occur here, we're kind of left with trying to figure out how it would have happened, had it been done correctly in the first place. And it just wasn't in this one.
So I guess my, my point, the point to my question is, just to be sure we're clear, we're not, the applicant or the application is for a retractable awning. And we are not being asked to determine the appropriateness to the guidelines of this existing unpermitted tent. Is that correct?
If the tent were permanent, you would have to apply the guidelines. If it were temporary, you would not be, you would not have jurisdiction, if you want to say it that way. But since there's no application, we don't know what the intent is.
Yeah, I think because it's, it doesn't have a permit, I don't think it necessarily follows that you need to infer that it is then permanent and thus under our jurisdiction. I think you give very absurd results like a unpermitted tent in the middle of a parking lot in a historic district in some commercial property. That clearly is not us. This just happens to be on a roof and the subject of a substitution for a retractable awning. I don't think we have much to say about the tent or any jurisdiction about the tent. I think it's a codes compliance issue separate from our jurisdiction. I'd like to just focus on the, the awning and whether we think that works.
I can, in terms of speaking to the awning and whether it works, for the applicant, certainly, I think it works and it solves some, some problems in, in practice, I think, that have, or after opening, that have, have been discovered in, you know, providing a use on, on a rooftop piece. You know, what I'm remembering back to is deliberations of this body on this case, which were lengthy. this case, which were lengthy, and on two occasions. And that if this awning were, you know, amid some pretty stiff objection from the staff's analysis, if the awning were presented in total with the complete package, I'd encourage this board not to lose sight of the project as a whole, and where it started, and where we've gotten to.
Is there any other discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
I recommend disapproval of the application for the awning at 104 Fifth Avenue South as not meeting the applicable statutes or the guidelines for the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning overlay district.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second? And seconded? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All against the motion? Motion passes. The motion is to, is disapproval by the staff.
All right, the next one, another toughie. Hate to keep doing this to you. Wildwood Avenue developed in the early 1940s with minimal traditional architectural styles, a common style associated with suburban development after World War II. Largely because they are not considered as historic as other styles, these minimal traditional houses are among the most endangered architectural resources we have. The meteoric rise in their popularity in cities across the country following World War II, and its nearly a sudden replacement by ranch-style houses that followed, is certainly significant, a significant era in the history of the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood and throughout Nashville. It represents an important chapter in the growth of the neighborhood and the city. These buildings are found throughout Belmont Hillsborough, but Wildwood has a fairly intact collection. Staff's determination that buildings of this style are historic was upheld by the commission when a request to demolish 1820 Wildwood next door, based on the premise that it was not historic, was disapproved by the commission in May of last year. The applicant has made an offer to purchase the property for $240,000, but is waiting for confirmation that the home can be demolished before they close. So that's what they're here before you today, is to ask for demolition. The home's current condition is due to deferred maintenance, a negative front yard slope, and poorly constructed additions, mainly a rear addition, which you see in the image to the left, and a rear dormer. The poor construction of the rear dormer has caused significant ceiling damage in a room in the rear of the house. The current owner believes that these additions were made in the early, late 60s or early 1970s without a permit, and has indicated that they have caused the family problems since they first purchased the home. The primary concern with the current condition is the negative front yard slope, which has allowed water to push against the front foundation. Keith Garman with Garman Engineering Company states that there are two possible solutions. One, to construct a front retaining wall and reconstruct the basement retaining wall, and two, to raise the height of the foundation walls, which would mean lifting the whole house. Either scenario will also require repairs to the front porch, subfloor framing, floors, walls, and of course, ceilings. The applicant has an estimate of $115,000 to add the retaining wall and repair the damage caused from the deferred maintenance, the rear additions, and the negative slope. Although the repairs needed to correct the negative slope and damage done are costly, the engineer did not find that the house was in danger of collapsing, and the family does continue to live there. The house to the left, 1820 Wildwood, was recently renovated into a duplex. The contracted purchase price for the property is $240,000, and based on recent sales, these are some of the homes, this appears to be an appropriate price for a home of this age and this size, but not of this condition. For several years, the house and the land both rose in value. But in 2013, the value of the house dramatically dropped by more than $34,000. While the land value continued to rise, there have been no zoning changes, and other properties of similar size and age that have recently sold in the vicinity did not have this similar drop in building value. Both rose concurrently in all cases, except for one, where the building only dropped in value by $1,000. The extreme change in building value of the house alone for 1818 Wildwood would indicate that that drop is due to the poor condition of the house. The applicant states that the $240,000 would be a fair price for a home if not for the perilous state of the structural elements. Therefore, the fair market value for the home will remain at $240,000 even after significant repairs. So if purchased, the new buyers will be creating a self-imposed hardship by purchasing a home significantly above its current value. The property has not been properly maintained, repairs have not been made to fix the leaks, and damage created from incorrectly constructed additions, repairs and corrections have not been made to address the negative front yard slope. All of these factors combined lessen the current market value of the property. Staff recommends disapproval of demolition of this building based on economic hardship, finding that the purchaser will be creating a self-imposed hardship by purchasing the property for more than its current value. Because of the historic value of the house, demolition meets Section 3B1A for inappropriate demolition, and demolition does not meet Section 3B2 for appropriate demolition. So we recommend disapproval.
You all have a question for staff?
Public hearing?
Robin, we saw a case a couple of months ago, very similar in self, I mean, a economic hardship, and you guys recommended approval of that. What, can you recall that one offhand? And what do you think the big differences are between that and this one?
There have been so many, I can't recall exactly. When we have approved demolition, it's because the requirements to repair it far outweigh the value.
I guess the one I was thinking about was, is the one that we saw. And it's only one I remember that qualified under economic hardship that we heard.
There's been several. I apologize, I don't remember exactly which one it is.
This whole idea about self-imposed hardship came up then. And it's just, it's very, I find it very difficult to process. And I, I questioned it at that time. I mean, if you're going to do massive renovations, you're basically having a self-imposed hardship unless you can buy a home at half of its value. Isn't that basically correct?
I wouldn't agree with that, no.
What would you, what do you think the market value of this house is?
It's not $240,000 with the state that it's in right now. So it would not, you're creating a hardship if you're giving someone more money than what it's worth.
But markets, the whole market, market is defined as what somebody would sell it for. So if somebody, if this person won't sell it for anything less than $240,000, then that's the market. So if he's got to put $150,000 in it, then he's got, he's got an economic issue with the home, doesn't he?
Then maybe that's a home he shouldn't buy. I mean, if you...
But that, I mean, that's a, I'm not saying I'm for this. I'm just saying, the house that I remember, we had the same discussion. And we all felt like it was so costly to redo, then that's, that's an economic hardship. I don't really see the difference between that and this one. I'm by no means suggesting that I'm for this. I'm just trying to walk through that.
Again, I don't have those numbers here in front of me. But again, we looked at the comps, which is typically what people do when they're purchasing a property, to determine if it's a fair cost or not, or when they're even pricing a property. Realtors will look at that. So that's what we looked at, too.
So you're saying the comps are significantly less than $240,000?
No, I'm saying that those homes are in good condition. So they're bringing that amount of money. A home that's not in that kind of condition, I wouldn't think someone would purchase it for that amount of money.
Robin, would you say that in applying the economic hardship standard, there's a fundamental difference between owning a home, or having recently purchased a home, designing your plans, and then finding issues, especially structural issues, versus knowing exactly what you're getting into, paying X, and saying, this is going to be really expensive?
That's actually something staff talked about this morning. A lot of times, that does happen. You look at a home, let's say it's $250,000. Everything around it's going for $250,000. You, as a purchaser, say, that's a fair price, $250,000. You get into it, and you find things that could not be seen. That's not the case here, because they have done their due diligence, and they have found these issues before purchasing it.
Yeah. Richard, I think I remember the case. And it was, it was just that, that they purchased the home and were finding issues that were not identifiable beforehand. But they owned, they owned the home at the time. These do not own the home.
They have not purchased a home.
I don't know why that would be any different from this. I mean, they, just because you don't find anything doesn't mean that you, you overpaid still. The guy overpaid because he didn't do the correct due diligence. So you have the same theory as you would in this one.
Okay. All right.
In my mind.
I think that's, that's true. And right or wrong, what I was describing to Robin, I think, is taking the self-imposed hardship and reading, to some degree, into that, either in intent or knowledge, as relevant. If it's, yes, you may have, you may have overpaid. If you had no idea, to me, that's very different than someone knowing exactly what they're getting into and saying, it's going to be a tough project unless I can knock it down.
As a board, will we be put in a position to determine intent?
I think that's really tough to do, except in a case maybe like this, where they haven't purchased it yet, and all the information is before us. I think otherwise, that's really dangerous.
I guess what I didn't say was, are we then advising people who are making investments in neighborhood to go out and buy it, and then come to us after the fact? And then we're to determine intent?
Yeah, I think, I think that is a risk. But they'd also be committing some kind of fraud by, by doing that. Whether, I don't know that it's our job to quality and try to figure that out, other than if it's before us.
Okay, let's, if there's, I know we'll have more discussion, but let's go ahead.
I agree, we'll be determining intent.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
I agree, I agree.
Are the property owners here who would like to address the commission? If so, come forth and give your name and address.
I may not be the best person to represent. Manuel Zeitlin, architect, 516 Hagan Street. And then Doug Revere in the blue shirt is the purchaser. And then Donald Hunter is the current owner of the house. So they're both here, if you have any questions for them. Basically, I should also say that Doug Revere is the person, I think he turned down a demolition request at 1820 next door. Doug Revere is the person that stepped in and bought 1820. We did a design for an addition to it that was approved. He's since renovated the 1820 Wildwood house that you saw a picture of earlier. So this is sort of a case of putting your money where your mouth is. He's demonstrated his willingness and support of the commission's finding that these are houses worthy of keeping. He spent money renovating that, that adjacent neighboring house. When he was renovating that house, the back wall of it fell off. The foundation collapsed during construction, and they had to rebuild the back wall of that house. And there wasn't any sign on the front end that there were problems with the house. So again, he demonstrated that he, in the course of that renovation, he repaired that wall and moved forward. But what that also showed is that the houses, these 1940 houses, while being an important part of the fabric of the neighborhood, intrinsically don't necessarily have a lot of historical value themselves, other than representing that period as a general, general fabric. So when we started looking at this house, when he made the offer to purchase the lot, his intent was to renovate this house. After having, doing due diligence and getting a structural engineer report, it's almost like a totaled car. It's like, yes, this house is, it'd be nice to keep, but, and his intent was to keep it. But the cost to make the repairs to this house before you can even start the renovation are so much that they outweigh the cost, you know, they make, they outweigh the value of it. So the one line I'd like to read from the structural engineers' report is that the foundation walls have reached the point at which they are no longer stable. The danger for a structural collapse of the residence is small but not negligible at the present time. A heavy rainfall event can cause collapse of the foundation walls if runoff penetrates into the basement. So, you know, you have a situation where we have an owner that can't afford to make the necessary repairs. And so it's a dangerous situation. You have a potential buyer who's willing to step in and do something that's compatible with neighborhood. And again, it's demonstrated that he's, you know, certainly supports that renovating these houses, which he did next door. So what we'd like to propose possibly is a compromise, is to, for the board to set, in a motion, is to set a requirement that any new construction on this site would meet the same one and a half story design of the current house. Because what happened, two doors, I guess, in 1822 and 1824, which didn't show up in the pictures, are two very large two-story houses. And across the street is, I think, the Rigsta House that was built years ago that helped get this neighborhood in the overlay to start with. So the idea of maybe, I think in terms of, you know, the neighbors, one of the concerns about keeping these houses, that we're also keeping the scale that these houses have. And that helps keep the character of the neighborhood also. So we'd like to propose that maybe that's a solution, that we set, or sort of a guideline requirement, that any new construction on these lots would be in the same scale of the existing house. And therefore, you know, that prevents him from flipping a lot to another builder that would come in and do a two-story building, even though that's not his intent. Thoughts, questions?
Okay.
Okay. And if you have any questions for either of the parties, they'd be happy to answer.
Okay. All right. Do you all have any questions that you'd like to?
I have a question for the owner and the potential buyer.
And you want to have them come up and give their names and addresses, so that we can...
Hi, I'm Doug Revere. I'm the potential buyer of the home.
I'm Donald Hunter. I'm the, well, I'm at Weir.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I guess my question is, what Manuel described was, you had your purchase price at $240,000, which, based on what Robin has said, seems consistent with fair market value if the house was in decent condition.
Comparable shape.
Good comparable shape. So during your due diligence period, you've discovered all of these issues that are outlined here that look like they cost in total somewhere around a little over $100,000. Did you at all talk about a purchase price adjustment to reflect the fact that there's new information, and the house really isn't worth $240,000 if there are all these issues? That the original agreement was based on assumptions that are clearly not true now?
Well, we did not discuss the idea of a, call it $115,000 price reduction. No, we have not discussed that.
Because that, to me, seems like the appropriate resolution. And then you have the money to make the changes that need to be made to conserve the home. Otherwise, I think by approving it for demolition, we're essentially allowing years of neglect, which is a self-imposed hardship, to be the reason for the demolition.
Yeah. But what we have to consider is that we have a demolition request and hardship in a historic, significantly, I mean, historic area. And I don't think, I mean, that's not in our position to suggest, or we can suggest, but I mean, that's not something that's on the table. I think we need to consider what has been presented to us. And that makes sense.
What's not on the table?
Well, the fact that they need to negotiate a lower price and that kind of thing.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, okay, I shouldn't tell them that that's what they should do. Agreed. But I do think it's relevant in terms of, $240,000 is clearly not the value of the home, given what everyone knows right now. So to then go ahead and purchase it for that price anyway is a self-imposed hardship, in my mind.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions for you all?
Do we have an opportunity to respond to that, or is that...
Absolutely.
Is that...
Sure.
So to define economic hardship, of course, there are, how you define economic hardship in this context is different. But as a, as a citizen, as a layperson, it's the pure definition of economic hardship from the perspective of the owner, who, under that scenario, would have to sell the home for just over $100,000 to, you know, that's a, that's a massive economic hardship for, for an owner who is not in a position to make these repairs. If I may also, just to reiterate a point that Manuel was making a few moments ago, the idea that this home is in horrendous condition and is in significant need of immediate repairs that the owner cannot make. And the, there is a, some chance that there will be an event, a water event, water comes down that street and hits right in the homes. I know that because I own the property next door, so I can speak very cogently on that. And the idea of neglect, I think it's important, and I'm just speaking for Mr. Hunter here, is that he, that the home is in the condition in which he purchased it in. It's the, it's... It's because it was poorly designed and constructed from the beginning with a slope that hits that front wall. So all the water coming down that street hits the front foundation wall. And over, you know, 60 years of pushing and pushing and pushing against that foundation wall, it's now at risk of collapse. So I wouldn't put the onus on the damage that has been caused to the home squarely at the feet of Mr. Hunter and his family. It's a function of how it was constructed originally.
Okay, all right. Any other questions of the owner and prospective owner? All right, thank you all so much. All right. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Lindsay Moffett. I'm with Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors. And I'd like to say one thing, that it is important that we maintain some diversity of housing stock in the neighborhood, which was one of the reasons we went to historic and had these homes declared as minimal traditional homes, with the hope of intent, the intent of maintaining them as smaller housing stock. As you all know, our neighborhood has had massive additions put on houses, and that's great. It's been great for the neighborhood. But we'd also like to see these houses conserved whenever possible. I think the suggestion, if this house is determined to be inhabitable and needs to be demolished, that some parameter be put on so that a smaller housing stock is replaced that is in keeping with the other homes on the street, if that is your decision.
Okay, thank you so much. All right.
To that end, legal, may we encumber this property with that requirement?
I would argue it's already there in the design guidelines.
I've kind of...
Maybe, may we specifically encumber this property with that requirement?
Well, I think you have to evaluate it based on the questions that you have to answer under the guidelines. You have to answer the questions in 3B1 and 3B2. Those are your criteria. So if you pass under 3B1, A and B, does it meet those two? Then you ask, does it meet the, then you go to 3B2 and ask, does it meet those? That's the only decision really here before the board at this point. And I don't know if you can add or take away from that, but that's where the board has to make its decision.
I agree, and I would be hesitant to encumber someone's property in that regard. In terms of the math, for those of you who are better at that than I am, in terms of determining the economic hardship, we have a $240,000 value, and we're talking about 100 and, what is the burden of declarations? Is it 50% of that? Or 50% of the appraised value? You ran through the math, I just want to know the hard numbers.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
In order, this packet of information goes to the applicants kind of declaring an economic hardship. And what's, what is the math of that burden? In other words, you've done an analysis, fair market value, $240,000, give or take. And the statute, the Metro statute says, if the repairs are 50% of that, then it's an economic hardship? Or is this more gray than that?
It's much, that's in the code. That's not the design guidelines that you follow. That's what the code looks at for determining for properties outside of a historic district. So it's not for you to consider. You're just looking at, and I'll take a minute just to explain this because I know it always gets confusing. I know you guys know it, but just to explain it further. The economic hardship in our design guidelines is not the economic hardship of a property owner or an individual. It's the economic hardship of the property. Are the repairs, do the repairs outweigh the value of the building?
The standard for determining economic hardship is just in the base code. And it lays out eight different factors. And the ones that I think in this particular instance are important are number three, which is the estimated market value of the property in its current condition, the word's current condition being important, as well as number eight, which is the hardship is not self-imposed. And that's defined in the code as, the hardship has not been created by the, quote, "previous actions" or "inactions" of any person having an interest in the property. And I sympathize with the current owner and acknowledge, as the applicant said, that you can't put all of this stuff on somebody because you may not have the money while you're living in it to make all of these repairs as necessary. It's not that easy. Life is not that easy for 90% of people. But just because you didn't do all that stuff doesn't mean you should walk away, in my mind, with full purchase price as if it's in good condition. That's also an injustice to the guidelines that are supposed to be protecting the property. So for me, I have trouble getting to economic hardship in this context because I think the property is worth a lot less than what the applicant is willing to pay for it. And that purchase price is not for what it's worth now. It's based on its teardown value. So I think we'd be encouraging it by accepting that 240 is some kind of economic hardship now, given that the transaction hasn't closed and, as far as I can tell, doesn't necessarily need to.
And to that point, the word "value" has dual meanings here, one being the dollar value and that consideration in terms of the applicable design guidelines that we're to consider in 3B1 and 3B2. And then the value that was placed on these structures on Wildwood Avenue, their historic value, or their value within the community, which is maybe less tangible or attached to dollars.
Agreed. And I think the latter one, if that is a sliding scale, that's a slippery slope because I kind of feel like if something is deemed contributing, we just need to apply the standard, rather than saying the standard is higher or lower, depending on how contributing or how incredible some house is. Otherwise, we take something very mushy and put it on a sliding scale, and I'm not sure where we'd end up. Probably inconsistent.
If that were the case, we would have lost a lot of structures that were, had, were set for demolition, but people chose to buy them and fix them up. But the value they paid for them was less.
I have a question for staff. We have in our packet here, Section 1740, 420D, which gives the eight criteria for which we can, may consider for economic hardship. But does the code define economic hardship? I just want to make sure. You've said it already, Robin, but I just want to make sure that we understand what we should be considering in terms of establishing whether this is an economic hardship. Because you might argue that since the purchase hasn't been made yet, that the question of how much the current owner paid for the house versus the cost of renovating the house compared to the current market value.
It's defined in the design guidelines, and I don't have the exact language in front of me, but it is that idea of the rehab outweighing the value.
Yeah, I've got it from a, there's eight factors. It's in, it's in the base of the code. But it's taken, I think where you're going is a logical way to look at this. If you take that in this context, the owner paid $13,000 for the house in 1972. It requires $115,000 of repair. We're at $130,000 in the markets, $240,000. I think that's sort of further to the point I was trying to make and a better example. It's, there's no economic hardship here. It's, he may not have the money to make those repairs right now, but the value of the home is still there. So the home is really worth $110,000 because the next guy, or 100, can't do the math in my head. If the true value of a home in good condition would be $240,000, then the value is really $135,000 because you have to subtract off the 115, or, sorry, $125,000. You have to subtract off the 115. So there, he's, he's got a 600% return over 30 years. It's not terrible.
I guess I'm coming from a different, I mean, I don't know, I don't think we should be asked to make economic decisions as a board. I mean, that's just not our function, in my mind.
We're tasked with that, though, by the statute.
I don't think so. What it is, is we're to get different reports and evaluate them.
No, we're clearly tasked with it.
No, we need, we're supposed to get something from an appraiser, or an architect, or a licensed engineer, or a structural engineer. We've gotten something from the structural engineer. And in my mind, everything else about value is stuff that we can't really back up. We've got a table here on page seven that shows a house that was torn down in 2012 or 2013 for $345,000. So, I mean, I can't sit here and make a determination that it's economic hardship or not. I can say...
My point is...
I can say, wait a minute, I can say there are structural problems. I know that. I do know that, based on, you know, this information here. But everything else is, I think, it's too, there are too many assumptions as far as the economic side.
I hear what you're saying, but the guidelines specifically reference the statute that I sent, Hunter, that talks about that we need to make the decision based on that stuff. It lays out the eight factors, and they include the purchase price, the market value and its current condition. I mean, it says that. That's what we, to not consider those factors, I think, we can't defend the result. We have to do the best we can to consider those eight factors. That's what the statute says.
May I chime in here? If I may. All the commissioners today on this particular case have made really good points. This is, this is not an easy case. This is one that requires you to wrestle with sometimes competing interests and different, thinking about it from the applicant's perspective, from the purchaser's perspective, from the potential seller's perspective. And all of those different things are contemplated, as I read the code, as things that you can consider. You may not agree on whether there is economic hardship in this case or not. And, and I think that's why it's submitted to the board instead of one, one person making the decision, because you may see it differently. It's a fact question as to whether or not economic hardship exists in this case. You may also not find, or you may find, that the hardship is either self-imposed or not self-imposed. There are actually arguments that probably could be made that are valid arguments on both sides. But the board has to decide which one it is, it finds most persuasive. And that's kind of how you, the task of weighing the things that have been put before you. So I think everybody has made some valid comments, but I think that goes into the weight that you give it in terms of whether or not you vote to approve it or to disapprove it. So to the extent, I hope that's helpful to some, to some degree.
Yeah, and I agree. It is, it's not an easy standard to apply, and that's why a number of people ought to weigh on it. I totally agree.
Just one more comment. You know, on number four, 70.40.420.D, number four says, "An estimate from an architect, which you got developer, real estate consultant, appraiser, or other real estate professional." So if you're thinking about, if we're looking at values, and I mean, most people will look at an appraised value, I don't think we have an appraised value. Or did we? No, so...
I agree. That's the point I was trying to...
Yeah.
We only have the tax assessor's value. We don't have a real appraisal.
Because, I mean, if somebody, let's just say, if somebody paid cash for this building, they're going to, if they want to pay cash, they're going to want to know what it is the appraised value of this property.
Maybe you're bringing up a good point, is that we ought to require an appraisal on every time we see a case like this.
Just a point.
You almost need two appraisals. You need one in its current condition and one in its as-rehab condition, and then the cost of the repairs. And does that make sense? I don't know. We do have a lot of information, though. We don't have that particular item, but we do have a lot of information.
May I add a special issue?
Sir?
I'll invite the applicant to please come up and address this.
Thank you. I think in terms of the, logically, if we apply, and I think we can all agree, that the current value of the house, in a condition that is not substandard and is not subject to further degradation and structural, significant structural issues ahead, I think we've all are in fair agreement that the approximate value today is 240,000. That's a fair price and a fair valuation for the home. But four, the significant structural issues that were overcome by, that were identified during the due diligence period. So the valuation would, by definition, then just subtract out the cost to bring the structure back up into its safe condition. And I think that would, that would be, I think, I think you do have enough information, is what I'm trying to say, to say that the current, the valuation is there for $125,000 in its current condition. And then it's a determination of whether that represents an economic hardship for the seller, whether it represents an economic hardship as a potential buyer. And so that, I think that, my submission is that you do have enough information ahead of, in front of you, so thank you.
I followed what you said. And so if you believe it's worth $125,000, why do you want to pay 240 for it?
The, and I just went through this during the construction phase of 1820 Wildwood, which I purchased from the applicant who was not able to demolish that house. And it's amazing what happens when you begin foundation work on these homes. It is, these are completely unreinforced foundations. They have no footings at all. The footings are simply debris and stones, whatever they had handy. They would, the foundations are sitting on dirt, basically, and no footings involved at all. It's amazing that they're still standing, particularly on that street where a massive amount of water comes down that hill and forces its way and pushes against the foundations of those, of those homes. So it is unlikely that anyone would take on, really not knowing, yes, we have an estimate, but as you, someone I believe, mentioned, that once you open up a foundation and try to do this construction, the risk involved physically and economically is just enormous. As part of the submission, and I don't know whether you have it in front of you, I've had, we did have, the economic analysis was performed by Manuel Zeitlin, who's my architect. And he, you know, most of the people that have seen this, and I do have other supporting documentation, I don't know if it's appropriate to present it, but most of the builders who I have shown this property to and who have examined both the structure physically and in person, and also in reviewing the structural engineering reports, all say that this house should not even be remotely remodeled. The initial report by the structural engineer was that it is unsafe to even try to remodel this because of the degradation. And so, really, the house is likely to remain in its, but for the approval of this application, the property is likely to remain in its current state until it actually collapses. And I don't think that anyone would want that to happen, so.
A question for you. Those other evaluations that you're referring to, has staff seen those?
No, I don't believe, I don't believe they have.
Do we have the one that says it's structurally not possible to remodel this home?
Yes. Well, each, each of the reports that you have...
Okay, this is the Garmin one?
The final paragraph of the full report is the, is the final recommendation that you have. I believe it's page number four of the structural engineer's report that you have before you. I also have, and I don't know, Robin, whether we can pass these around, this is the original letter from the engineer that you do not have, that says that there is a potential for collapse. I'm sure you'd like to... I'm sure you'd like to... You might... You may want to see that, and I don't know whether you'd like to see that. I also have a letter from Martin Construction Company, and I'll read, you know, part of it.
This is new?
Excuse me? No, you don't know... Okay. The point is, is that there are many people who would say that this house is in such bad condition that you really shouldn't remodel it. The structural engineer was asked during a meeting with myself and with staff that he said, "Okay, what would it take in a perfect world? What would it take to bring this up to a safe condition?" He made his recommendations, and then I have since had the bid to impose that. But it's really a... If you'll read the last paragraph of the structural engineer's report, which is part of the submission which you have, does state that really no practical way safely to reinforce these... This foundation.
I'm not totally following that, because the Garmin announced... Their report is on June 24th, and they do say there's no practical way to remove the existing foundation and construct a new foundation for the residence. But then on June 27th, you have a bid from the Don Harding Group that says, "Based on the inspection report written by Garmin Engineering, it'll cost $89,000." So I think when Garmin's saying practical, he's meaning expensive, not impossible. And so when we consider the cost, again, I go back to, "This house is worth $125,000. It's not worth $240. That's the issue." And you acknowledge that it's worth $125,000, so I keep circling back to...
No, I have to...
Why do you want to pay $240 for it and create a hardship?
I don't want to, but the hardship belongs, then, to the owner, who now has suffered $115,000 hardship himself. So it's not...
We can't make the owner make repairs.
I understand, but the point... Conceptually, the idea is that this home is in horrendous condition. It needs to be demolished, and that's the submission.
Yeah, but it's not your home.
That is correct, and we just as easily could have had Mr. Hunter be the applicant.
All right.
And maybe that's worth distinguishing. I mean, the applicant is not the owner. The applicant is a potential buyer. So I don't know that we can even... I mean, Susan, could we even... Should we even consider the current owner's economic hardship, if any, in this analysis?
He's not the one making the application.
Right. That's what you're saying.
Right. That criteria says, "If the denial of the demolition will result in economic hardship on the applicant, as determined by the MHZC, then demolition is appropriate." I don't know that if he's not the applicant and is not listed on the application as the applicant, I don't know that you can consider.
Because it is a different set of issues.
Right. And if he were to make the case, perhaps, maybe that's the case to be made. I don't know. But that's not the one before you today.
This is where I'm a little confused. We have a... The second sentence, the second to last sentence in the structural engineer says, "Our evaluation as a resident is not structurally sound and not suitable for rehab." We have an architect that says the same thing. So we have met two and... Two and four.
Except if you read page two at the top, he recommends different solutions beyond demolition. And the letter that's being passed out, I apologize, that's my fault that it was not in the staff recommendation. I did have it. It has been reviewed by staff, so I wanted to be sure you had it.
Our evaluation as a resident is not structurally sound and is not suitable for renovation. That's what's on this June 8th letter. What am I missing here?
Page two of the engineer report. "The retaining walls need to be removed and replaced, blah, 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 or the foundation walls need to be removed and replaced."
His concluding sentence is, "Our... The residence is not structurally sound."
And the property owner still live there.
I don't think that because something isn't structurally sound means it can't be salvaged.
And it's not suitable for renovation or repairs. They have met two of the provisions.
But we've also... We have conflicting information, then, because we also have a bid from someone who says they can do it for $89,000 that the applicant submitted, and part of their analysis was, "Look how much this is going to cost me." Not, "This is impossible." I don't think we're dealing with an impossibility. I think we're dealing with an expensive renovation.
Well, we're also talking that the applicant here is the prospective buyer, and the investment has not been made. But, I mean, I think all of this is relevant, and I think we've got a lot of conflicting information that we're going to have to digest.
The architect doesn't say that it can be... The cost repairs is grossed out, the question is, "Could it cost renovation?" Last, the feasibility for rehab.
You know, I guess, and I'm not... I'm with Ben. I'm going to look to the non-architects on this. But, I mean, to some degree, I think the intent of the ordinance is to be cautious that when land values begin to exceed the value of these homes... And I think that may be a situation here, where perhaps it's worth purchasing a piece of property for the land for $240,000. Build a, you know, put $150,000 into a new structure and maybe sell it for $500. I don't know.
Those are architect numbers.
Yeah, those are architect numbers. So I don't know what the answer is here, but, I mean, what concerns me a little bit, and given the eight criteria that we should look at, is that if people overpay for a price of land, I mean, if he had already closed on the property and then discovered all, you know, this, and then essentially the definition of the economic hardship has been met, then we could run into that a lot and see a lot of demolition because of the value of the land and new homes that are being built and sold. So I don't know, again, what the answer is, but it seems to me like this may be one of those cases. I mean, obviously, the house is in horrible shape, and if... And, you know, it seems somewhat unreasonable to have to, you know, to have to make those kind of repairs, to me. So I tend to, without necessarily having figured out all the math and having all the answers, I tend to feel like this is a reasonable request to demolish this structure. That's just...
Well, and then there has been examples in previous past where you've seen a house visually or have had reports to say, "This house is not worth keeping," but somebody has put their investment dollars in it and have done it. We've seen it in too many of the overlays, and, you know... So you've got one side versus the other as well. But just to remind ourselves that it has been done.
Right, and in this case, the per...
We're not asking the owner or some... We don't have the authority to make the owner make those repairs. It's just, it's a different issue. It's about whether there is simply economic hardship to the applicant.
Well, and in this case, because they haven't closed, and I think, part of me appreciates the fact that they've come to us before they've closed, however, it may not play in their favor, because, you know, the actual investment in the house thus far, you know, the $13,000, even with 30, 40 years of appreciation, plus the $115,000 or more, it seems like that they could, if the investment was made in the house currently, that you could still make a profit over that, you know? So I'm sort of talking in both directions here, but...
To me, I think there's some concern that by, if you say, if we were to disapprove the demolition here, there's some concern that you'd be sending a message, "Don't come to us first. Come to us later and play dumb."
So if... Because that's a very important point. Because if we... So if we do that, and the next applicant comes after the fact, is this commission prepared for that person to be left holding the bag and have to maintain...
I think you have to make it on a case-by-case basis, but I don't think it encourages that. I think that condition already exists today. I think people have already done that before. I'm sure they have. I think this is actually an opportunity to talk about it ahead of time, and it's a different application if the owner brings it than this applicant. And if somebody brings it after the fact, they're taking the risk that if they've overpaid for it intentionally because the land value is higher, they're stuck with it if they don't get the demolition disapproved. Whereas here, what we have before us, I think, is the land value is worth $240,000, so they can test the waters and see if this is a good idea or not. Clearly, the house isn't worth $240.
Well, I mean, we're also talking in a historic area that has been designated that, and you know you're going to be dealing with those kinds of things when you buy in these areas. And those questions are going to be asked. There are going to be situations like that. So, I mean, in other areas, you know, you buy, you make an investment, and you can tear it down. But here, I mean, that's why it's before us, that we have to consider why it is here before us today.
And however we decide on these sorts of cases, I think the incentive should be for any buyer to do their due diligence. I mean, if they...
But it is a... Sort of a self-imposed hardship.
I don't know that anybody yet agrees with me, but I think if the dollars are there to repair the home, I don't see why it should be demolished. It seems to me that if we disapprove this, the next buyer should come in and offer $125, $130,000, and given what the owner paid for it, that wouldn't be a big hardship, and that's the fair price of it, given its condition. I don't think the owner should be rewarded for not having made the repairs, whether it was intentional or not. Still, the dollars that are there to repair it will have left if someone buys it at $240. They're gone, so...
Are you willing to make a motion, and we'll test the waters?
I must continue discussing it.
I don't want to belabor this anymore, but I mean, I think we've... I think the applicant's met one or two of the standards. And we have a... We had a very similar case several months ago, where someone purchased a house, presented, came to us and said, "I have a structural engineer come down here." Came down and told me, you know, "It's almost impossible to rehab. I've already spent this much money, and I can't spend more rehabbing, so I want to tear it down." And we basically said, "That's fine." And now we're kind of turning the tables, and we're suggesting that, no matter what we think the purchase price should be or could be, we should automatically deduct it by rehab costs, so that a house could almost be worthless at some point in time. So I just think we need to be very, very careful, and unfortunately, the code lets us do almost both things, and that's what's so difficult about this.
But I do think that in the case that you're talking about, four, is that they went in and they were trying to do renovations.
But what difference does that make? We could have said... No, no, no. We could have said, "You overpaid." I know, we could have said, "You overpaid. Why did you spend that much?"
We could have.
They were saying they were in the process of renovating and identifying the issue.
But the economic hardship was because I paid X, and now I'm going to have to put Y in it. So the question would have been, "Why did you pay X?" Which is the same thing we are...
Well, it is, and I think you asked those questions and tried to understand whether it was intentional or not. And if it was, I mean, this case, nothing's happened yet. There is... This applicant has absolutely no economic hardship because they haven't spent any money yet. I kind of stopped there.
They need to buy and come back, and they will.
But we would... It would all be in front of us, so they knew what the condition was, and it'd be pretty clear that they overpaid for it on purpose, which would be a self-imposed hardship, to me, at least. I didn't... I don't think it's easy. I just...
I don't know if this helps any, but I think the project you're talking about was on Benjamin, and staff did say that they overpaid for it. But it was approved anyway.
But they overpaid... They discovered... They discovered quite a few issues after they purchased.
They had a home inspection.
I mean, it's sort of the purpose of the due diligence period before you...
We had sort of an innocent purchaser, so to speak.
Close on a piece of property is to determine whether you're paying a fair price for it or not.
And I think... Well, I don't know that we need to justify it so much as... I would hope that our decisions would encourage people to do due diligence, because that's most likely going to result in the preservation of homes versus, "All you need to do is get an engineer to say it's going to be tough, and you can knock it down." That doesn't seem like a good result.
If I might add one last thing, on that, to distinguish that case from some of the other cases, one of the things that, if I'm not mistaken, the applicant demonstrated to you all satisfaction, was that he did have an inspection done prior to buying it, and it was an initial inspection. Then afterwards, and they got into it and had a more detail when done in an event, and with the thought of rehabbing it, was when some other things came out. And I think that's what the board found a bit persuasive. Staff took the same position on that case as they are taking on this case, and... But I just wanted to make sure you all knew that was what was in the record that was different, was that there was some due diligence, there was an inspection, but then upon a more thorough inspection of things that they could not have seen readily, then you all made a different decision. That was in the process of rehabbing, is what I understood.
Noting that this application is arguably different and would require a different analysis than application from the current owner, I'd like to move to approve staff's recommendation to disapprove the application for demolition.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion to approve staff for recommendation of... Disapproval of demolition. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion did not carry. Did not receive four affirmative votes.
I don't think we had everybody voting.
Okay. Let's show our hands. All of those that are in favor of the recommendation, raise your hand. No, two. All those that are not in favor of that recommendation, raise your hand.
Need a new motion.
We need a new motion to bring this... I don't know if I'm going to bring it to a head, but to attempt to...
Before... Well, even if I voted, it would not...
We could vote on a different motion.
Yeah. It's not a tie.
But it could be four, but if there's...
Right. The rules allow for you to vote if the requisite votes are not met or in the event of a tie. So depending on how you were going to vote, my...
Do I need now to vote on the motion?
If you desire to vote, or you can abstain, or vote no.
There were only two, so no...
There were only two, so even if you had voted, it would not have made a difference. Okay. I just... I was thinking, maybe there were three. Okay? If there were two, it would not have made a difference. That's correct. Right. Then it would not have made a difference.
Okay. If I voted one way, it would be a tie, it still wouldn't pass.
Right. It still wouldn't pass.
Okay.
A tie would not have passed.
That's correct. Would have taken four affirmative votes to pass the motion.
So then where are you?
Then you have no action, and somebody's got to make another motion.
Shall I vote to clear it? I mean... Okay. All right.
You know, in terms of an economic hardship...
You know, in terms of an economic hardship, I don't want to punish an applicant who's doing good due diligence, but that's really neither here nor there in terms of what we're charged to do, which is to determine whether demolition is appropriate based on value, as we've discussed, and that's what I keep coming back to. And by the same token, I think we have clearly, I don't know if we've clearly done it, but to have applicants come before us kind of, and us to be the litmus test as to whether they're being forthright or not, is also a position I don't want to encourage.
I agree.
Or find ourselves in, and...
Unless it's obvious before us, but yes.
Right, and so, yeah, as a, as a way forward, does it make sense to members of the commission that, that we consider, so what's, you know, so what next in terms of the condition of this house and its contribution to the district as being a contributing structure? Are we, and is it our job to delay the inevitable or to make that determination or give that any credence in this argument?
First, back to the first point you made about being hesitant to penalize a purchaser, a potential purchaser, for doing their due diligence, there is potential for that, but I also think it's mitigated in large part by a scenario that ought to be the correct result. Maybe I'm just mean, but I'd go back to the seller and say, "Here's what I know, this is expensive, your house is actually worth this, I know we talked about this, but there were unknown conditions. Now I know them, the house is worth X, and under Tennessee law, you're obligated to disclose this to any other purchaser on earth. So now we know what your house is worth, and that's what I'm willing to pay you. And that's what they sell it for, and then I have the money to make the repairs." That's what should happen in my mind. As for what happens to the house after this, I don't know. I mean, I wouldn't also want a result where environmental court goes after the owner to try to make them make repairs. That's not the, I don't want that either, that's, that's not right. I don't know that it's reached that point, maybe it has, not that they would do that, but that it's really in bad, bad a shape itself.
In considering that very specific piece to this case, and considering these, the contribution that this street, which was added to the district, makes, and that representative of the neighborhood association spoke to, which is that we want to maintain a certain scale or a certain size price point, I'm not sure if all those things are possible by what our actions are today because the very next application after this, or if it is economically feasible then to purchase this price, or it goes down the path that the purchase price is less and the repairs are made, then we then get an application to, I don't want to say destroy that, but certainly affect its place in the neighborhood in terms of its, the scale of it, its size, its price point, and whether, I'm considering this in the larger context of if it comes down, then, so then what? And what are these two outcomes that, I know we don't know that, but what are these two outcomes that we're judging as far as economically, if there's a hardship or not a hardship, and what the end outcome is? And then maybe just a species sort of...
What I described is what I hope the outcome would be. I think, you know, Hunter talked a little bit about how a lot of these historic neighborhoods have a lot of pressure on them because they're desirable and the land value sometimes exceeds the value of the home. That's why these guidelines exist, one of the primary reasons. And I think that condition is very evident here because that's exactly why it's still, the purchase price is still $240,000, because its teardown value is still very positive. If this was in a different neighborhood and you discovered all these issues, you'd go back to the purchaser very quickly, or the seller, and say, "Listen, we got to cut the purchase price in half because I found all these problems." You don't do that here because the land is very valuable. It's that land value that pressures what's causing the issue that we have before us, which is, in my mind, one of the primary reasons these design guidelines were put in place. I think that is not dispositive in and of itself, but it's a factor that we ought to consider when we think about outcomes.
A couple of things. One is, we, they have met, in my opinion, number two, and they have met, in my opinion, number three, number four, in my opinion. As far, as far as the purchase price, we don't know if his original offer was $350,000 and they reduced it by 100, and they're at 240. We just don't know that.
We could ask them.
I mean, but why is that? I just, I just don't know if that's what our task is to, that's the slope that we're, that is so difficult to go down.
And yet we're still looking at all these guidelines, so it is one of the guidelines that we're considering.
I think it's really mushy, but that, those numbers and those facts are specifically enumerated in the statute as it spells out what you should consider when determining economic hardship. And that statute could have been drafted better, but maybe by design it was meant to be mushy because every case is very different. But that's, I think, what we've been tasked with doing. The guidelines, the applicable design guidelines here talk about when demolition is inappropriate and appropriate, and it specifically says, "For economic hardship, it's as determined by us in accordance with 1740.420," which is those eight factors I passed around.
To meet all eight, right?
No, no, it's a, it even has a catch-all, I think, too, doesn't it?
Number seven is a catch-all.
Any other factors you think are important. It's just meant to provide guidance.
Well, if they, if they, if they have number two, if we have number two in hand, and we can argue if we have number four in hand, or, wait a minute, number, we have, we have a letter from an engineer and we have a letter from an architect, are we debating whether or not those are, they don't meet these standards?
Those...
But so we also have conflict, conflict in information.
Those eight are not standards to be met. If you read them, they don't say, they, you know, you have to meet this, this is a standard. Those are the eight things that you can consider. The standards to be met are sections 3B1 and 2.
Okay. I think there's a, you could do a different analysis and say... I'm not trying to make the economic hardship out, case, I'm trying to rely on 3B2A or B. That's a different analysis.
Say that again? Right, 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 I agree.
You don't, economic hardship is not the only way.
And just to add...
Robin, are you? 3B, 3B1, is your basic stance that A and B are not met and should, and therefore we can't even go down to 1740, 420D?
No, you can. Our, our staff's thought was that that was not met, that it was not, that it still had, that it is historic and that it still has historic value. But of course, you don't have to agree with that.
So forgetting our whole, our whole economic hardship, our first starting point is if we can get through A or B and 3B1, is that correct?
No, because that's for demolition as inappropriate. And if you're wanting to say that demolition is appropriate, you would need to say that it's not historic, which could potentially mean the destruction of all the homes on that street, or that because of the condition that it's in, it's no longer historic, that it no longer has its historic character. Again, we did not feel that it met that. Does that help?
So you could go to 3B2C, that's where we are today.
Correct, yeah.
And then if we do that, we drop down to 1740, 420D and find...
Correct.
Then we can convince ourselves if we think some of those may have occurred.
Those aren't standards, those are things that you can use to determine if economic hardship has been met.
With, may I add one thing? With one caveat, number eight is a standard. One through seven are just things that you can consider in deciding, but number eight is a standard in the sense that it cannot be self-imposed. If you find that the hardship is self-imposed, then under these guidelines, you should not grant the permit for demolition. If you find factually that the hardship, I'm sorry, that the hardship is not self-imposed, you should grant it. If you find that the hardship is self-imposed, then under these guidelines, you shouldn't grant it. So it really, and I think your discussion today has been a healthy one in that respect because it has hinged on whether or not this is a self-imposed hardship.
That all boils down to the purchase price?
Well, it can boil down to any one of these seven factors, anything in those seven factors you can use as a basis for your determination in either direction.
It's not just the purchase price. I think in the past, they've had ones where an owner just started at night just slowly taking apart his house. So became structurally unsound. There's a lot of ways to get there, I think.
Yeah.
I guess the other thing to, that we acknowledge, want to acknowledge again, is that the applicant hasn't bought the house yet, so the hardship is not on the applicant yet.
Is that, is that meaning he needs to buy?
Well, that's not, that's not our charge. Our charge is, he's saying is, he has an economic hardship, he hasn't bought it yet.
He doesn't want to self-impose hardship.
There you go.
That's true.
By making, by purchasing the house at this price and assuming that he can demolish it.
Right. In different instance, somebody did buy it, and we told them, "You, you paid too much for that property, and it's too late," right? And right...
She said you paid too much for it, but this was, there were mitigating factors too.
Right.
It's not like someone is automatically...
Let's just remember what we're charged with. I think I'm reminding myself that too because we've had so much discussion, I'm getting a little confused.
Is anyone who wants to propose a new motion?
What happens if no motions pass at all?
It's automatically approved.
It's automatically approved. The applications.
The application would be approved because you have to make a decision within the 30-day time period.
It's not ours.
Okay, I mean, that's got to be the other side of it.
You have to, you see, if it carries.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm not sure I'm for it, but somebody needs to.
I think, I think, well, we know what the result will be if, if we don't, we know what the result will be if no motion carries, so if anyone is on the fence, I think they should go one way or the other rather than just, because we know what that means. So if you're on the fence, I think you're for demolition because we know that's going to happen. And if that's the way it goes, that's the way it goes, but I think we should be clear about what the result will be.
I'll make a motion to disapprove the application for demolition of 1818 Wildwood Avenue based on two, excuse me, item 3B2C, and specifically referring to the code 17.40.420.B, number eight, that the hardship would be self-imposed based on our deliberations and the purchase price of the house being more than its value.
Could I ask for clarification?
Sure.
So you're making the same motion that was made previously, Ben?
Yes, my motion is for disapproval.
Can you do that?
Sure.
All right, there is a motion.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, which is to...
Disapprove.
Disapprove the, disapprove the demolition based on those criteria that Ben spoke of. Raise your hand. Okay, all opposed to the motion.
I'm going to abstain. I'll oppose.
Okay.
So the motion passes.
So the motion does carry, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And I do think it's worth reiterating again that we may get a very different result if the applicant was someone besides a potential buyer here, so I think that's worth saying.
Okay, 1313 Shelby?
Would you like to take a break?
Okay. You want to take a, say a five-minute break?
Take a five-minute break.
All right.
A duplex, and a duplex for the newly subdivided lot has already been approved. Staff recommends demolition of the rear building constructed in 1950, which you see on the left. Staff finds the demolition of the rear building to be appropriate since it was constructed at the edge of the period of significance for the district and is not an original feature of the property. The primary building facing Shelby Avenue, which you see on the right, was constructed around 1925 and retains its original historic features and materials. It is a one-story frame building that according to the footprint provided on the Property Assessor's webpage, has approximately 994 square feet, not including the porches. Since the building is contributing, the applicant is attempting to show that the building is beyond repair and therefore meets the qualifications for economic hardship. Using the Property Assessor's website, staff found eight recent home sales in the area that are similar in square footage and age. Removing the outliers and taking the mean of the remaining sales, the potential value of this home is estimated to be around $160,000. According to the Property Assessor's information, the last sale was in December of 2012 for This places the purchase price approximately $14 per square foot over the mean. The high purchase price for a property that is currently inhabitable may be due to the large lot size which can be subdivided, allowing for that second home to be constructed. The applicant submitted a budget for rehab that totals around $160,000, and these images show just a few of the needed repairs that are more in your staff recommendation. Economic hardship is based on simply bringing those elements of the house that require repair up to code. In the budget provided, there are expenses included that are not necessary to bring the building up to code, such as surround sound, granite countertops, landscaping, fencing, and a $200 mailbox. Even so, including these expenses, the estimate is $154 per square foot. Staff spoke with two restoration specialists who've worked in the neighborhood for many years, and they provided estimates of about 100 to 150 per square foot. So staff found that the applicant's estimate was reasonable. The applicant purchased the property for approximately $14,000 more than its potential rehabilitated value. However, this may be due to the fact that the property is wide enough to be subdivided, which they have done. The applicant's preservation permit application states that they intended to demolish this building and the accessory structure and construct three homes, which it wasn't zoned for, but the plan is to construct two. Based on the comps provided, the applicant, by the applicant, the new homes in the neighborhood are valued at about $175 and $185 per square foot. Taking into account the property's potential, potential value of $160,000, rehabilitation cost of $154,000, and the fact that the high purchase price reflects the ability to construct and sell a second home on the lot, the applicant has not made the case for economic hardship. Staff recommends approval of demolition of the accessory structure as it does not contribute to the historic character of the district, and disapproval of the request for demolition of the primary building, as the building meets section 2B2A for inappropriate demolition, and the project does not meet the requirements for economic hardship since the repair costs do not exceed the value.
Any questions?
All right, this is open for public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission? Is the applicant here? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to address the commission on this? Okay, all right. I am not... I am not going to close the public hearing because we may have some comments. All right. We'll open the floor for discussion.
I think I've asked this before. I've forgotten the answer. Can we split, just for clarity's sake, can we split the, make separate motions on the outbuilding? I'd rather not combine those, just for clarity's sake.
You may.
All right. I move approval of the demolition of the accessory structure at 1313 Shelby Street as not being part of the, as deemed not historically contributing, per the staff's recommendation.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion passes for the demolition of the outbuilding. All right. Open for this area-
For discussion.
Robin, sorry, I forgot to ask this when, when you were presenting, but in your review, did you find that the home, I mean, the home is clearly not in very good shape, but did you, did you find that it still had architectural and historic interest, still retained its historic elements?
We did.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
The, there's really nothing left on the inside. As you can see from the photos, there's no plaster or anything like that. But on the outside, it does have its original cladding, its original form, its original roof form, porch elements, original openings. The windows aren't there, but it does have the original openings. So those are all things that can easily be repaired to bring that full contributing value back. The big thing we always look at is, is the form still there? Have there been changes that have altered that form that can't really be removed in a way that protects that form? And in that, we didn't find that to be the case here.
Did you all, I know in the, the estimate for renovation, did you all give a total of the amount that, with all, without the granite countertops and those kinds of things?
We didn't figure out that amount, since even with those things, that amount was still about $150,000, which is what other developers or contractors have told us. So that alone was reasonable?
I'd, just for the record, like to add that the pictures of the siding from the inside are not something to be, I guess, spooked off by. It's very typical for houses of this era to not have exterior sheathing, and that the siding would be applied directly to the studs while, you know, creating some level of difficulty in rehab. That is common of buildings of the period. And I'll also note that many a home with similar detailing have been renovated and without great expense and without being out of, I guess, priced out of the market in terms of the cost of doing such.
And Robin, the foundation of the house, did it, in your, in your assessments, that looked like it could be reasonably restored?
This one is similar to the other one in that there's a real grade change from the lot next, the new lot next door in this home. So there's gonna need to be some retaining walls and some foundation repair, but it's not unlike every other historic building that has minimal foundation in the, in the neighborhood.
And the square footage, again, is?
I believe it was 994 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Robin, would it be reasonable to assume, since the applicant has made application for, subdivided and made application to build a house next door, that some of these grading and water issues could be, and probably should be addressed with the construction of that house?
That's correct.
And certainly, they shouldn't be exacerbated by the construction of that house.
Correct.
My analysis on this one is a little different, I think in large part because the applicant's not here. So for me, if, it seems like Robin's answer to, are the historical elements still there, was a good answer, and it appears that they are. And based on all the information they've looked at, it seems, their conclusion seems reasonable to me. I'm inclined to give them deference on their recommendation, and anything different than that, if it's rooted in economic hardship, I would think that the applicant would have the burden, would be, need to be here to make their case, and they're not.
I have a question for, for staff. We should be experts on this by now, but staff recommendation states that the project does not meet the requirements for economic hardship, since the repair costs do not exceed the value of the home. And this gets back to a question I asked earlier, and couldn't find it in the report, but the requirements for economic hardship, where are those defined?
It is the same as the last one. It's, in the design guidelines, there's a section 3B1 and A, 1B and 2, and those are the standards that you apply, and then they're in the-
Sorry, Robin, let me catch up. You're not talking about the eight points again?
Yes. But I don't think they have it, and this one would have it in the other.
If you look on page two, I mean, excuse me, page three, those are the standards in the design guidelines to be applied. And then they reference the ordinance, which are those eight that you looked at in the previous case.
So where does it say, where does, where do our guidelines, ordinances, codes, say that the definition of economic hardship is the costs of repair exceed the value of the home? Could you clarify that? I haven't seen that.
That's kind of an analysis that codes uses when it's about to demolish a property under its property standards provisions. So that's kind of a typical way that it is, that it is weighed from that standpoint. You don't have that specific of a, of a guideline or a mandate, if you will, either in the ordinance or in, as I read the, the guidelines, so correct me if I'm not correct on that, Robin. But in the guidelines, it doesn't spell it out quite the way it spells it out under the property standards provisions, which deal solely with demolitions in other areas other than in historic areas. However, I think you can fairly apply that standard even within the context of the guidelines that you have, or the problems that you are to consider under the ordinance. And I think under number one, under number seven, and there may be a couple of others where you could apply that kind of analysis, even though it's not specifically spelled out in the ordinance.
And Hunter, if I might add to that in our discussion, general discussion about demolition is, it gets back to, I think for us, it's questions of value, and that's not purely dollars and cents, which I think the code, that's, that's the analysis that they do, is it's a purely financial dollars and cents analysis, where value for us is broader than that, as spelled out by the guidelines.
Well, I guess, and maybe that's what we somehow need to better define, is what is that definition? Maybe that would be, have to be a change to the ordinance, but if, I mean, I guess the staff recommendation would suggest that the, the purchase price of the home is not necessarily considered. Is that the intent of the recommendation, or?
We did consider it, but based on the purchase price, based on the value of the comps in the area, based on the fact that they have that additional lot to make money off of, that it does not rise to the level of economic hardship. I mean, as we all know, after the last case, there's not a formula that can just be, plug in the pieces into the formula, and you have an answer. All those things have to be considered and weighed against each other.
And in reading it, the disapproval is, is on, on two, two counts. One is that its demolition would, would, is not appropriate, because if the building or the building is of such architectural, historical interest and value, that its removal would be detrimental to the public interest. That's first part of their analysis and findings. And secondly, is the economic piece, which goes to answer, I think, item 3B2C, if that were the applicant's, you know, grounds for requesting demolition. And, you know, I feel like, because a lot of this value is created in historic neighborhoods, as was pointed out in the previous case, is purely by their location and land value in total, that these historic neighborhoods and the qualities that they have, and the houses, and the architecture, and their siding, and all those things go to create value, and that if, if, if that is removed, then in turn, that value is removed. And in this case, they had the extra lot, subdivided it, and so not considering that value next door, I think, would be, would certainly, or that value next door has to be considered, I think, in our evaluation of this parcel of property. In addition to the fact that it specifically, 2B2A is, is met.
I think there's a big difference between this, this case and the previous case. This case, in my opinion, they did not have a letter from the architect or an engineer that specifically states that the structure is compromised, or the house can't be rehabbed. The one from the structural engineer says it could be expensive, but not, it doesn't go to the extreme as the prior case. And I'm really struggling with these costs, to seeing how they're, they add up to be economically, to create economic hardship on this case, unlike the last one. So I think there are, in my mind, this one is, doesn't achieve the level, again, as I thought the last one did. So I think there, I think, I think there's a clear difference between the two.
I'll move we approve staff recommendation.
All right. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Point, order, can we get a clarification on, on, as, as we're making disapprovals of things, I think it'd be wise for us to maybe state what, what we're doing as opposed to. Approving a disapproval can be confusing.
He's asking you to state the motion.
Okay. I'll approve, I'll move we, sorry, it's clearly spelled out here what the staff recommendation is, and that's what I'm asking us to-
All right. I'll make sure of it.
Yeah, but, yes, that we're, my motion is to disapprove the request for demolition of the primary building.
1313 Shelby Avenue. All right. And we have a second. All in, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Robin, if I can make one suggestion, on, on these, and you may already do this, but for the economic hardships, this particular application, I think, was hard to pull apart the pieces of what goes towards, what are luxury items and what goes towards making the house basic and sound? That maybe at the staff level, if you're not already encouraging the applicants to sort of organize their case for economic hardship, consistent with teasing those apart, so we can locate those numbers better, because it's already clearly hard. Thanks.
Okay. The next project is 2601 Belmont Boulevard. It's an application to demolish an existing rear addition and outbuilding, and to construct a new side dormer, rear addition, and outbuilding connected to the house with a second-story walkway. The addition requires a side setback reduction, and the outbuilding requires a reduction to the side and the rear setbacks. For this project, the staff is recommending approval of the demolition, the construction of the addition, and the setback for the addition, with some conditions, which I'll explain in a few minutes. We are also, but we are recommending disapproval of the garage, the setback reduction for the garage, and the second-story balcony connecting the house to the garage. This lot is situated at the corner of Sweetbrier Avenue, and therefore, base zoning requires a 10-foot side setback from Sweetbrier. These photos show that the existing house and the existing one-story garage do not meet the setback. The garage in an existing addition will be demolished, which the staff finds to meet the design guidelines. Here is a proposed site plan, which shows both the area that's to be demolished and the proposed new construction. The proposed addition does not significantly add to the depth of the house and will decrease its width. It will be inset from the back side walls of the house and will not be any wider than the existing house. The addition does require a setback reduction. It will be five feet from the property line, rather than the required 10 feet. Staff finds that because of the existing location of the house, the setback reduction for the addition meets the design guidelines. The garage is proposed to be located five feet from the side property line as well, and will sit on the rear property line. The existing garage also sits on the rear property line, but is only approximately one foot from the side property line. Although a setback reduction for the garage in this property may be appropriate, staff has concerns about the scale and form of the proposed garage, and cannot recommend approval of the setback because of these concerns. Here are the first-floor plan and the second-floor plan. On the second-floor plan, you can see that the garage will be attached to the house with a, with a large second-story balcony. Here is the roof plan. The roof plan shows that a new side dormer is proposed for the Sweetbrier facade, which will match the front dormer and the existing rear, which will match the front dormer, and the existing rear dormer will be extended. Staff finds that the dormers meet the design guidelines. The addition's roof form will be hipped with a slope to match that of the historic house. The side elevation saw a second-story balcony connector between the house and the addition. The second-story balcony connecting the house to the garage is not something that was historically, that was seen historically, and is not something that the commission has approved in this district in the past. When the commission has approved connectors between a house and a garage, the connections have been made on the ground floor and have been narrow, typically about four feet in width or less, and we have typically required those to be open on the sides. This connector that is being proposed on the second story is 14 feet, six inches wide, and will, in essence, create a two-story attachment to the two-story garage. It will make the garage an attached garage. The design guidelines state that attached garages are only appropriate when the vehicular entry is at the basement level and the garage doors are at the rear. The proposed garage does not meet either of these criteria. Moreover, because the site is on a corner, the connector will be highly visible and will be visually jarring. The garage will be approximately 26 feet by 26 feet. It will have a maximum height of 30 feet, which is approximately six feet lower than the historic house. While the staff finds the ridge height and footprint of the garage to be appropriate, the outbuilding's roof form and overall scale contrast with the historic context. Along Sweetbrier Avenue, the garage forms an 18-foot tall wall. Because the outbuilding requires a setback reduction and is just five feet from the side property line, this tall wall will be visually jarring and will not be compatible with either the historic house or the other outbuildings in the neighborhood. Setback from the wall is a second-story portion of the structure, which is capped with a hipped roof with a slope to match that of the historic house. While the proposed setback reductions may be appropriate for a garage that is more compatible with the scale and roof form of the historic area, staff finds that, in this instance, the setback reductions do not meet the design guidelines, because they were only increases the garage's inappropriate form and scale. Here are the rear and, I'm sorry, yeah, the rear and the front facades. And then finally, here are some 3D renderings, which help you better understand the project. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the demolition of the addition and the outbuilding, the construction of the rear addition and side dormer, and the side setback reduction for the addition with the following conditions. Staff review and approve all materials, known and unknown. The lap siding have a reveal of five inches at maximum, and three of the mechanicals and utilities be placed in the rear of the house or on the side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. Staff recommends disapproval of the second-story walkway connector and the garage, including the setback reduction for the garage, finding that they do not meet Section 2B1I of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning design guidelines. I'm here to answer- I'm here to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well to answer questions.
So they can keep, if we disapprove the garage, they can keep the existing garage there?
Yes. Yeah.
Do you know what, with all the additions, removing the garage and the existing addition, and what do you end up with here? What the?
Lot coverage would be.
Yeah, the lot coverage.
We typically don't look at lot coverage. That's more of a zoning issue. We look at open space and scale and form. I didn't do those calculations, because that's not something we look at, but I don't think it would significantly change, only because they are taking down an addition and taking down a garage. It would change, it would, certainly the open space would be decreased.
It doesn't seem like a big change.
Not a huge change, no. I don't think that they're near their maximum under codes.
Do you have any discussion with the owners about the resolution for the garage?
Well, when they submitted this plan, they submitted a plan and they submitted a revision. You know, we did express concerns primarily about the balcony and about the, you know, location of the garage and the setback to make sure that there's enough room for them to kind of pull in and out of the garage safely, since they're kind of right on the sidewalk by the time, we wanted to make sure that by the time they backed out, they could, they could see, you know, so they're not backing out blindly onto the sidewalk and into Sweetbrier Avenue. So, but in terms of the form, this varied slightly from the original proposal, and so this was the revisions. So we'd given them comments, kind of, to get to this revisions, but we still didn't feel like the garage was all the way there. I think one of the major issues is the two-story connector, because that's kind of driving the form of the garage, so that's one of the reasons we find it problematic.
But, what, I mean, okay. Do you all have any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. This item is open for public hearing. Are there those that are here that would like to address the commission?
You want to hear from the proponent first?
Well, let me, if the applicant is here, I'd like to hear from the applicant first.
They can go first.
Well, we would, we typically would like to hear from you first. If you'll give your name and address, we appreciate it.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Gordon. I'm the homeowner. I currently reside at 3105 Vanderbilt Place, and I have fired Manuel in the last 20 minutes. I'm kidding. I figured I'd come up here and talk. Thank you for considering this, and.
Manuel did a great job.
He did. I'm just kidding, Manuel. So, this is my first time doing this, so forgive me if I'm not following right. But anyway, our, the connector, the purpose of the connector, and we do agree it's a little large, we actually have scaled it down to four feet, so it is a walkway. It serves two purposes. One is to walk from the garage dry into the back area, because that's probably how we'll be entering often. And then the ability on the second floor to walk from, that is the master bedroom, up on the top to the garage. We travel about every week, and to haul, this is a practical thing that my fiance actually came up with, because we haul our luggage down into the house, all the way down into the garage, and he said, wouldn't it be great if we could just walk from the master bedroom to the garage? That's all it was. So we asked for consideration on that. We do have a plan to have it just for, just for walking, and that's all. Also, we did, the original plan called for the garage to share the same, for the new garage, to share the same alley side and street side as the existing garage, and we did agree to push that back three feet for safety reasons. So, so we have made that accommodation in here. I think, I think that's it. Any questions?
Do you all have any questions? Just, so that walkway.
On the second floor. Does this plan show your revision of what you just said, or does it show the full?
That shows the wider one. It didn't, I guess it was after 5:00 or whatever on that day that we got the narrower one in.
Okay.
I think, but it's, it's just a, it's just a walkway.
Has staff reviewed the revision?
No, because it was already, because we'd already written in such other staff recommendations, we didn't review it.
And we're happy to come, I mean, we'll do this next month, because we're not going to be at that point, anyway, at that point. But I would like, I don't know if this is for after, but to understand more about the garage, we, you know, changing the materials on the garage, to break it up. Because I agree on that, that front facade of the garage, it's a big mass, and we've, we've made some changes on the materials there. So I just don't, I just don't know if that's something we have to come back with later, if that was what the objection was based on, or if we can talk about that.
What we'll do is, is what we need to consider is what proposed today. And if there is a revision to come back, the staff will review it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now you make them up and give your name and address.
Well, I just wanted to keep the procedure correct. That's all right. I have one for the record, and then hopefully one for each member of the commission. My name's Don O'Donoghue. I reside at 2603 Belmont Boulevard. I'm immediately adjacent to the south of the proposal, and I reside there with my wife and our loving cat. So, and just minor historical interest, this property was originally purchased, 2603, by my mother and I in 1970. But prior to that, I lived at 2614 Belmont, so this is my 67th year on Belmont. I just wanted to put that in perspective for you, so I know a little bit about the I want to say that we support the staff and their recommendation relative to the garage. But I want to emphasize to you some of our concerns beyond that, since we now know there's going to be a subsequent proposal, and it's very important that these be addressed, in my opinion. We've seen today, in this one agenda, what's going on in this neighborhood. Five out of 10 items in front of you. Five out of 10. And it is all about location, 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 yes. But as we continue to develop in this area, we're creating that driving demand that's causing people to come in and invest ever more in larger and larger additions, which I do not believe meet scale and mass of what is there. I would urge you, when you look at additions, to look at the original building structure, not take into account the addition that's already been made, and then say that the next addition's just a little bit larger. That's cumulative additioning, and I don't think that's appropriate in terms of scale and mass of the original historical structures. Given that, you could ultimately build out a building that the additions dominate the original historical structure.
Time.
Well, I'll be very quick, and I can come back up if there's some questions, but we're opposed to a 30-foot-high garage next to us. That's equivalent to three stories. The square footage in that garage is three-fourths the square footage in my home and exceeds many existing houses on Belmont. We're opposed to the second walkover. I carry my baggage out the back door to the garage. I think they can too. We want to welcome them to the neighborhood, but we want to welcome them to the neighborhood as it should be, not just as they want it. We have a right to light and air. That's the purpose of zoning. I would ask you to look at the second drawing I gave you, where I just blacked in the mass we're talking about along the second-floor level alone with the addition. We're looking at a total mass, including that walkway, of somewhat of, close to 100 feet. The lot's 100 feet. If you go back to your site plan, I think we're very near with the proposal before you today, 50% lot coverage. With, I stress, that's with the balcony and the garage and the addition that they're proposing, which exceeds what's permitted by zoning. And last, as a technical matter, I would urge this commission to consider adopting some guidelines. I believe you have that authority under Metro Code to provide additional guidance to applicants about what is acceptable in terms of scale and mass, and stop McMansion-ing everything around town, and put some controls on that. My taxes increased it by one-third more than $1,000 this last year. What did I do in that year? Nothing. It's because of the approvals you're making. So the concern the neighborhood has raised about running people out of smaller houses, you're going to run everybody out of them, and you're going to be looking at nothing but $10,000 and $1,500 McMansions in that neighborhood if you continue. I urge you to give them specific guidance. There's no outbuilding on my block face more than one story high. Not one. You're setting a precedent, and I can promise you, if you approve this, I'll be back demanding equal treatment under the law. Thank you.
Lindsay Moffett, again, for Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors. One point I want to make is that this house is on an alley in a street intersection, and one of our concerns is pedestrian safety. We have a lot of walkers, runners, skateboarders, baby carriages, dogs. And because that sits so close to the alley, any garbage truck or construction truck or delivery truck coming out of that alley, unless there's line of sight, you're going to have a pedestrian issue, safety issue. People typically push their baby carriages in front of them or the dogs in front of them, and that carriage or that dog is going to be in the alley before whoever's with that baby or dog can see. So my concern is that we make sure that we have line of sight. I know codes would not permit a fence that didn't have line of sight at an intersection like this, and I think we have to make sure that any building that's placed there also has line of sight. I know the current garage sits right on the corner. It does not meet that setback, but if they're going to tear it down and we have an opportunity to meet the setbacks, I think that really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
I'm not sure I totally understand your argument. Can you, can you walk me through it? Just, you're talking about the garage and obstructing the line of sight at the alley, and?
If someone's walking down Sweetbrier and a vehicle is coming out of the alley onto Sweetbrier.
You just can't see beyond the new garage.
Correct.
There's an existing garage there.
Correct. And you can't see beside it, out of it either. It's also blocking, obstructing visibility of pedestrians. And I guess another thing I might mention, too, it is alley-oriented, and why aren't we out-oriented the garage doors to the alley for alley ingress and egress? I know there is a curb cut there, but it's going to be a double garage. That means a second curb cut or a double-wide curb cut onto Sweetbrier. And I know that our guidelines, we're trying to make houses that do sit on an alley and put a garage in and have access from the alley. Just a thought. Thank you.
All right. Can we put the sessions?
Back to mass and scaling. We had had that discussions before, and there was, I remember, an example where we were, you know, very concerned about that, so, and the rhythm and spacing next in the neighborhood. So, Melissa, can you elaborate a little more? I know, who asked that question? Richard, did you? About, you know, how much space it's taking and looking at the planning here. I mean, are other homes that, will this be the largest home on the block when it gets built, is my question.
Sure.
Absolutely.
So again, I didn't do the calculations for the lot coverage. I mean, looking at the site, because they have such a deep front yard, I would guess, and again, I haven't done the calculations, that they are well under their, the zoning, with the zoning permits, because they have that deep front yard. Now it is getting a little bit more crowded in the rear. The design guidelines don't really talk about lot coverage, so it's not something that we have really looked at. We're looking more at height and scale and compatibility with the historic character in the historic neighborhood, the rhythm of spacing. So we, as a staff, don't often do the calculations to see what the percentage of open space or percentage of lot coverage is. You know, in this case, we thought that since there is an existing addition and an existing garage, and yes, this is increasing it, but not increasing it drastically, is that we thought that it'd still mount with the scale of the neighborhood. Now, looking at, we did not do the comparison for how this compares to other houses in the district, but just looking at the methods in the staff recommendation, maybe not on this side of Belmont, but certainly on, across the street on Belmont and other lots on Belmont are built up and have had large additions like this and garages. So, you know, staff felt that the scale of the addition and, to some extent, the scale of the garage could be okay, but we would want to see some changes to it, but particularly the scale of the addition and the footprint of the, of the accessory building met the design guidelines.
I guess from other examples that we've had, I mean, this is just me personally. I don't know whether the other commissioners feel that way, but where that has been pointed out to us about how the rhythm and scale goes from your neighbor, you know, your neighboring property. So I'm a bit on the line about this.
I mean, the commissioners can certainly disagree with, you know, our interpretation of it.
That's just my personal assessment in terms of how we look at the other properties, and then this, this is going to be new structure, which sets precedence for the other buildings to be done in the future.
Melissa, the gentleman that spoke observed that every other outbuilding in this particular area was one-story. Were your observations different than that?
On this, I believe he is right for on this side of Belmont, on this block, that they are predominantly one-story. Now the commission has approved two-story outbuildings in this district fairly commonly. I mean, typically what we're looking for with outbuildings is that they be subordinate to the existing structure, the historic structure, and that they, you know, be compatible with the district. I think if you're looking at a smaller portion of the district, yes, they're only on one stories, but if you look at kind of, it depends on where you kind of take your scope of you. If you look out several blocks, you would find two-story accessory structures.
Okay. 30-foot two-story structures, or?
30-foot is on the high end. I mean, I, definitely, but with the 30-foot, we were comparing that to the historic structure, but yes, 30-foot would be on the high end.
Yeah. I would like, as if we were to review the garage, to at least look at some in the vicinity of this home, as we begin to look at the garage, which we're not doing today.
And also, let's be mindful that 30 feet is measured to the peak of the roof, and typically, I mean, we, I'm trying to make different standards for, different roof forms have different impact at the street. And so, as we're considering comparable height or appropriate height or compatible outbuildings to the main structure, certainly, the building is 30 feet tall. If you measure from the peak of the roof to the grade, it's 30 feet. I have less concern about the height for that very reason, and the fact that it's subordinate to the main home, as I do about the 18-foot wall that creates this mass on the sidewalk. Agreed. And wonder about compatibility in terms of a fairly modern design when the guidelines say it should reflect the character, the period of the house. say it should reflect the character, the period of the house. I know we don't take that literally. Have we approved more modern designs like this for outbuildings in this neighborhood before?
I'll jump in if you don't mind. The guidelines state that it should match the character of the house or be utilitarian. So we certainly have looked at modern design for outbuildings.
So this would fall more under the utilitarian?
Our main concern was the massing, and it seems like it might be an easy fix in that if there's not the upper-story connector, which is inappropriate and hasn't been approved in the past, and the large deck that goes all the way around the garage, it's easy to pull that height and that massing down. It's as tall it is right now so that those floor levels match up. But once you take that out, I think, you know, it may be pretty easy for them to bring the whole massing down.
Yeah, I think it's trying to match the 12-foot ceilings in the house.
Chair, we've had a request from the architect to address the commission. The architect has requested to address the commission.
I'm sorry.
The architect has requested to address the commission.
Sure, we have not closed public care. I have done that for a while now.
I just wanted to speak for one that got approved, so I didn't, you know. I don't want to jinx it, though. Manuel Zeitlin, architect. I just wanted to point out two things. One, if you look at the plan that's up there, the crosshatch area is the footprint of the existing addition that's being demolished. So you can see that it's actually bigger footprint than the new addition that's being proposed, so it's actually a reduction in scale. And then we're certainly supportive of the staff's recommendation to approve the addition and not approve the garage at this point, and then we'll come back with a redesign next meeting.
May I have a short rebuttal? It'll be very short. And I didn't want to get into this detail, but there's 600-plus square feet being added at the second level in that addition that does not exist today. The footprint is indeed smaller. The mass is more than double. I would also add, as to the utilitarian criteria cited, the proposed roof structure for this outbuilding is not utilitarian, and I would ask that you insist the room being constructed on top be identified as to use. I have considerable suspicion about that room.
I'm happy to.
May I have...
I'm just asking that they identify it when they resubmit. That's all. We don't need to debate it.
Sorry, did Manuel, did you request that we not consider the garage right now or that you're open to the idea of taking it off?
The staff recommendation would basically mean they would have to come back for the connector and the garage.
But I'm saying if we're not, so are we...
And the architect has said he's in agreement with that.
They could go ahead with the addition onto the house. They would have to come back here for both the outbuilding and the garage.
There's no reason to talk about the garage anymore.
I have a question for Manuel. On, if we were to, at consideration of the addition, will that alter at all when, as we not consider the garage? I mean, for windows and, I mean, won't there be a revision at some point of the back of that house and the window placement on the top level?
We could approve that.
Maybe with a door versus a window being flipped, but I don't know.
But we could approve that at that same time.
Well, I know, but if we're approving the addition, we're approving it with windows or doors that feed to this connector.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying.
Can we say that, given the location of it, specifically that it's in the rear, that we could, if we're going down this road of approving the addition, not considering the garage, to the extent there's that area where this connector is, it is in the rear and staff can work with them to...
We just need to make sure that we do that.
There could be administrative approval.
Because there should be, I mean, there might be revision to that.
I would object to that.
Are we sure? Excuse me, sir. Could you please not interrupt the commission? Thank you.
I'm just, as you're talking, I would see the entire proposal.
Okay.
If there's any revisions, I trust that the staff would either find them appropriate and not necessary to bring before the commission, or they would bring them before the commission along.
I just weren't aware that we're, we need to consider that, and we need to address it. Okay.
In that revision, Manuel, could, would you have any changes to the way the garage goes? Is that the one you're talking about? Okay. That's what you're saying.
They're going to address that, but we just need to make sure that we're, that we make it in our...
Proposal.
In our motion, that there possibly could be a revision to that.
Yeah, I think there'd be, need to be, because we couldn't probably approve a door on the second floor going to nowhere.
Sure.
There's a door to nowhere.
Okay. All right. Other discussion?
For the architects among us, are there any thoughts about the window scheme, on the addition, and specifically where it attaches to the original home?
I mean, I think as a hyphen, a concept which has been used, you know, in the past, it certainly says hyphen in that there's a distinct material change and that they've chosen to do that with glazing and then a spandau panel. I mean, architecturally, it makes sense. I don't know that it necessarily copies something we've seen before, but as a hyphen, it's clearly identifiable as, you know, this is where the historic house is, and then new from there, and that it's glazing is, I don't have an architectural, I guess, objection to it in terms of massing or pattern of openings. I think it actually, as a hyphen, makes sense that it would be glazing.
I think it sets back.
It does, and because it sets back, it certainly says hyphen.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve staff recommendation.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
May I make one amendment to the motion and suggest one?
We have a motion and a second. We'll open the floor for discussion.
Hunter, I would suggest that because we have this condition where we're disapproving the garage, which I think also means we're disapproving the connector, it leaves a door to nowhere and that we're asking staff to work to administratively approve a solution to that...
Second story.
Second story door to nowhere.
I would...
Or is that something, or we need to decide that's something we need to see again?
In my opinion, the door, I don't know that the second-story rear balcony, I don't know how the staff feels about it, but if there were a second-story rear balcony and we did not consider the application from the balcony back or the patio or whatever you want to describe it as, that door wouldn't go to nowhere. It would go to a second-story balcony, and that is certainly not an anomaly for an additions in this neighborhood. So I think...
On the side or in the rear?
In the rear.
Because it is on the side, right?
Where it says door beyond.
Sure, it's a door to a balcony.
But are we, I guess, I was accustomed seeing those only in the rear, not on the sides, maybe?
It's setback from the street a good bit.
Yeah, I don't have a big problem with that. Was just trying to provide as much clarity as we could.
Okay. Are you...
I mean, I don't, I'm not suggesting we don't need to provide clarity. I think it's not necessarily a door to nowhere. It's a door to a balcony that, in the review of the project, I don't see would be problematic if the railing went all the way across. There's a second-floor balcony, and it exists, and if there's a choice to make a new garage with an addition, you know, or some sort of connector, that that'll be considered on its own.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's good. I think that's a really good point, because then it means, while we're approving, there's very little for staff to do administratively, because unless they want to change it from having this little rail that's left.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
All right.
And the opposed. Motion passes.
This is the last one of the day? Yeah? I think so. So this is an application at 1205 Linden Avenue. It's an application to demolish the existing building and construct a new building. The existing building was built as a duplex, original use, between 1945 and 1950. This is more recent than the historic buildings nearby. It's maybe that style that's minimal, traditional, that there are clusters elsewhere, but here, the surrounding context is more 1920s and 30s craftsmen, so this doesn't contract, doesn't contribute to the character of its context, and staff finds that the demolition meets the applicable design guidelines. The new building would be two stories tall with a flat roof topping out at 25 feet in height. The front wall would be 61 feet wide total, made up of three distinct sections. You can see before you, it would have a primary section that would be brick-clad on the left, a narrower brick-clad section or brick section on the right, and an elevated bridge connecting the two sections with a driveway or breezeway below. In terms of scale, the overall height and width would be appropriate, considering that the lot is 76 feet wide. And the surrounding historic contexts, as I said, are craftsman houses, generally contributing houses in the 23 to 30-foot tall range. However, the form of the proposed new building is not compatible with that context, kind of like you were saying in the last case, the roof form can have a, different roof form can have a different impact. Here's some of the context on this, this house side of Linden, the same block that this house would be on. Let's get to that. The flat roof is something that would be seen more typically on a commercial form. There is a building with that similar roof form on an abutting property that faces 12th Avenue South, but the context of 12th Avenue South is very different from Linden Avenue. The buildings that face Linden Avenue, as I showed here, there are typically the traditional residential form with either hipped or gabled roofs. And the building on buildings here on 12th Avenue South historically were similar residential forms as well, but there has been commercial infill over the years. Because this house, or, excuse me, this property faces Linden Avenue, staff finds that that is the context that it should relate to. With our design guidelines, of course, we're just looking at the architectural character, not the use. The property is zoned for commercial use, but as I said, it addresses Linden, all of the other properties facing Linden are residential form. And in fact, as far as I could tell, the rezoning to commercial happened in 1974 originally, or historically, it was a residential area. In addition to the flat roof, the form of the building with the breezeway connection creates a large open space in the center of the mass, which is unlike the form of historic houses in the area. The street has a fairly consistent rhythm established by structures and spaces in between. This would be an open space in the center, and that would be in contrast with the context. Also, it's not compatible with the proportion of openings found on historic buildings. Usually, those are pedestrian doors and windows, similar width of compatibility or consistency in bays. This would be a large vehicular opening, essentially, very similar to, you would expect of a front-facing attached garage. Although there are certainly a lot of positive things that we would and have said about the character of the design and that the overall height and width meet the design guidelines, as would the materials, brick, wood, aluminum windows, aluminum storefront windows in this instance. Staff finds that the impact on the street rhythm is not compatible with the context. You've also read in the recommendation, I don't probably need to get into it too much, but staff also found there were issues with compatibility of the front setback with adjacent structures, residential structures, porch depth, and also some of the particular window configurations. Here's a side elevation that's not consistent with window patterns of historic buildings. Staff, to conclude or sum up, staff does recommend approval of the demolition of the non-contributing structure, finding it to meet those sections, applicable sections of the design guidelines. But staff recommends disapproval of the proposed infill construction, finding that it does not meet the guidelines for Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Is there anyone here that would like to address this? Give us your name and address.
Nick Dryden, the architect with Dryden Abernathy Architecture Design, 1107 Corollas Avenue. I'll try to be brief. Feel like I'm being kept after class here. 10 till 6, but...
You keep looking at your watch. We're still here.
I appreciate you sticking around.
Appreciate you staying.
This is, I'm here mainly because our owner has, I talked to Sean quite a bit through this process, and the owner is very strong about at least, you know, discussing this with the commission against, not necessarily against the staff's recommendation, but just to kind of have the conversation of how we've gotten to where we are and why we've made some of the decisions that we've made. And this, just for the record, this is the first time in 14 years I've ever spoken against staff's recommendations, so kind of an unusual position to me, for me to be in. But I do think there are some valid points that I can maybe make to you concerning this proposal. And I'll kind of explain a little bit about how we have, how this has come to form. Property's current zoning, obviously, as mentioned, is CS, commercial services, actually from 12 South, on Linden, from 12 South to the alley, that whole kind of block, if you can get back to that aerial map, right below where 1205 is labeled, and actually, to the left of that, that kind of commercial strip fronting 12th Avenue South, I guess, we are considering, obviously, that all that property around us, all the adjacent neighbors and properties are a commercial service. And also that we're in this kind of a transitional context, you know, from a commercial district to a residential district, and we are designing a commercial building. So we are considering greatly that we have primarily commercial context. So we are not necessarily looking at this in the same way that we would normally look at a residential property. So the unique location of this being in this transitional position on the block, being between commercial and residential, I think is a very important thing to consider in this, in this decision, architecturally. So context was very important to us, because we are considering the commercial context being the primary context at that end of the block. If this were in the middle of the block, we would have looked at this completely differently, and we would have considered the craftsman influencing context a lot more significantly than we have. And obviously, having a more commercial context with the commercial building adjacent on all sides was a big influence. That also taking shape of the building from the flat roofs that do exist on the buildings around us came into play. Massing scale and pattern, we believe, is in scale and in context with the position of the site. Transition being between the residential-commercial districts, very important. The mention about setbacks, we looked at the 12 South DNDP, and we're within compliance with that as well, along with the base zoning. So, you know, this is a very delicate building. It's a small building, very small footprint. There is no alley access, so you're very limited to how to park on this site, and obviously with the commercial use, we have to park. We have parking requirements, so we have to come on... so we have to come on the property from the street. And so also with a very demanding program for the building, we have a very limited footprint that we can sustain on the site. So therefore, our second floor had to outweigh the first floor of the footprint. So that is eventually how this kind of suspended area that creates this opening through the building to access the parking was generated. We don't really consider it a bridge, we kind of consider it just an interpretation of a front porch. It is kind of a front porch that's tucked in on that second floor, as well as the front porch that's tucked in above the front entry to create kind of an entry piece. Material was considered quite a bit, obviously, we're primarily brick with some wood siding, which is obviously consistent with the neighborhood material palette and context. So, you know, I just ask you to consider kind of the uniqueness of this site and where we are, being in this transition between commercial and residential, and that it is very different than, you know, our mid-block residential context, where we took the context of the commercial district very seriously and had many debates and conversations about that and what would be appropriate. Be happy to answer any other questions.
The buildings that you're trying to argue that you are compatible with are the ones, in essence, fronting 12th?
Fronting 12th and the fact that this whole little block between 12th and the alley is essentially included in that Commercial Services District. And the argument that there's a continuity down Linden is really not correct because we feel like this is kind of disjointed from the residential district on the west side of the alley. So we feel like it really kind of deserves a different, you know, if we're given the opportunity to design something new as an infill project in this location, for me, as an architect, it's like, wow, this is great. Look at all the dynamic forces here at play and all the influences and on the context and what makes this such a dynamic neighborhood and such a rich, you know, neighborhood on all levels with commercial services offered to a neighborhood. I mean, that's why this neighborhood is so highly sought after. You can walk down the street and have access to all these services. So walking down the street, approaching 12 South from this residential district, considering that transition, we feel like we're almost easing that transition a little bit more and making it less abrupt by letting that kind of commercial influence ease a little bit back into that district.
How's the, what's the zoning across Linden?
Across Linden is, I'm not quite sure. That actually, the Sandmore map actually shows that that was a school at one point. So there was a metro school. That's in the staff report of at least the...
That's where the three, yeah, the three non-contributing later, later...
Yeah, Clemens Public School, built in 19, either 10 or 16, I can't remember, but...
It looks like it's R8.
Yeah, currently R8. But again, talking about pattern, history, history and pattern of the neighborhood, I think that's one of the valuable things about going back and looking at Sandmore maps. I know that we have over the several years about influencing new development patterns, so I think that's an important thing to consider.
You have any other questions?
The big buzz term is compatible but not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic buildings. So is that where you're, or so you're suggesting the buildings on 12th Avenue South are historic?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the corner...
They're not in historic overlay. Everything that faces London is residential in form, even though that may not be its use. It didn't have the two-story typical Main Street type of development like you see on 12th.
But even if they're not in overlay, I mean, do we know anything about those buildings?
On the ones facing 12th?
We didn't research them, but again, that type of development wasn't off of 12th. It's residential.
So where's the overlay stop?
Do you see page 10 of the staff recommendation? You can see, I'll move the mouse over here. So this is the 2301 12th Avenue South. And in 1914, there was a single, single-story dwelling there, a house. And then by 1951, it became the two-story, flat-roof, commercial building. So somewhere in between there. And I think I traced it through the city directories that it happened sometime in the 30s, that the house was gone and that building was replaced. And then, of course, you can see down the rest of the block of 12th Avenue South and on page 245, which I didn't put in, but you can see that that's the match page there. Those are also mostly dwellings, but...
The grayish building in the corner is circa 1914?
30.
And this, isn't that that?
That's a single-story house, and then this is the 1951, and he thinks it's 30s.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where does the overlay, where are the boundaries of the overlay?
The historic overlay, this block here of these non-contributing buildings are all in the overlay. And then it actually cuts back behind here. You see that? And then it goes back somewhere kind of along there.
Which I guess is part of my point earlier, is that this is obviously a transitional, it's a major transition between the commercial and residential district. So there's a lot of debate of how you handle those transitions, you know, urbanistically, architecturally, historically, new infill neighborhood construction. Your question too about precedent, or what is context, what we're considering context, there is residential precedent down on the other end of Linden on Belmont for, there's a more kind of contemporary addition to an existing house, has a kind of a tile terracotta roof. I can't remember what it's called, Belmont Condos or something. It has kind of a flat parapeted roof. It does have a slightly sloped hip roof that's kind of out of sight, but, you know, from the street level, it definitely has a more kind of contemporary, commercial profile to it. So there is precedent on that street for...
Okay. Any other...
Something in line of that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that when I first looked at it and Sean presented, I was pretty clearly in the camp of, this really isn't even close because of 2B, 1C, E, F, and G. I think that argument, I still think that argument is really good, but I think Nick makes a number of points that are worth talking. I'm curious what other people think, because some of the, I can't think of any examples in this neighborhood, but some in, over in Lachlan Springs, where you've got a transition from a commercial street into a neighborhood, that first house in sometimes, if it is a transition sort of like this, it really does have a nice effect. I just don't know whether we should be making that or not.
May I recommend, before you start discussion, I think there may be some public comments as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sort of losing, is there anyone here that would like to comment on this?
Lindsay Moffett from Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors. I also serve on a group that's organizing to develop an overlay for 12 South. And one of the things that we're considering is looking at the context of the business properties contiguous along 12 South. And in a lot of those areas, they do go two buildings or two lots deep. So Nick is right, and this really is kind of a tricky transition area, even though it's under our overlay for historic conservation, it still is zoned commercial. So I think with the right design, you know, it's going to be great because it lends itself to bridge between the residential area and the commercial area. As to what that is, that's not my purview. But I think keeping it low and keeping it in a form that respects the other houses that are on the street is something that we would support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. All right. Now we continue our discussion.
I'm gonna, I guess, pose some questions to us for discussion as an advocate of this as a project. And what I'll start with is that if the demolition is appropriate because the building is not contributing, I'm then looking at the pattern of development in concert with a continuum of development in these historic neighborhoods. And that is to say that if you look at the alley pattern here, it was very, you look at the overhead of the bird's eye and you see that the two houses, actually there, there's four residences there, I think those were before the district, or maybe, I hope, is where the alley hits and where the school was, is a very deliberate reason that that was the size that it was. But the alley doesn't cross there, it kind of comes down, comes down and makes, in my mind, kind of a natural boundary, a more natural boundary between where commercial could be and where certainly mid-block residential should be. And I think because we're, I mean, we are right at the edge of the district, that it's not a stretch for me in terms of thinking architecturally, all the points that Nick made, that that could turn the corner there. And is this, I feel like this is a good example of how you bridge the gap between commercial and residential. You know, you might also ask as part of the discussion, I don't know that it's absolutely germane to this application, but is something up at the street in line with the next building also acceptable here, maybe? But I think setting it back and starting to, talking about transition from, and the forms of this and the materials that are selected, this certainly does that better than most other projects that, this is not a common application or type of application, but most other, we've seen a few that do unfathom and that do try to make some sort of transition between what amounts to, you know, a small, this is not a heavy commercial, well, I guess, talk to some neighbors, they would consider it heavy commercial if they're trying to find a place to park, but this is not heavy commercial. This is a node in a neighborhood, a street, you know, a linear sort of connection in a neighborhood that is, acts as the center, and people come to that center both from outside and walkable within the neighborhood. And so in that regard, I don't see it as inappropriate from a pattern and as a transition from use to commercial, which is permitted by the base zoning, into mid-block residential, I think it does that very well. And for that reason, in terms of pattern of development, not necessarily use of development, I don't see as much of a problem with it, and I don't have the same objection to it that staff does in terms of, I'm accepting that it is making that bridge between the commercial and the residential, and that it doesn't necessarily have to, by proximity and up to the edge, be residential within the block. That's not necessarily right, it just, that's something I don't take issue with because of the adjacency to. What is a historic pattern of development, a historic pattern of commercial development?
I somewhat agree with you. I'm not real sure that I, with the proximity of the building, I'm just not sure that the style of the building is, I would rather see a more transitional look, but for all the proximity and the division of the alley, I think this is a, it can be a transition, and I'm not opposed to that, and it's proximity to the street and it's use in putting the parking in the back, but I question whether the architecture is a little too drastic for a smooth transition between the homes that are on the street.
I think actually the rendering's almost a little misleading because it is brick, and I think it would be a lot softer when it's constructed than maybe these renderings, which I think really helped it a lot.
To that point...
And there's wood, I'm sorry.
And it's not on the street.
To the point of making a transition and some adjustment being made to this, one of the things that, I'm remembering back to a project that was considered, it wasn't a store commission submission, but it was over in Germantown before that district was established, and there was a, two contributing homes, and then there was an infill multi-unit sort of apartment thing that changed the pattern within the block. And there was this rhythm of, you know, 10 things that moved down the street, and then the last one, we were like, maybe we should put a gable on it, and then, you know, the architect worked on it forever, and, yeah, that'll fit better. And I think in your mind, that, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just, I'm wondering if not this, then what do we encourage it towards?
Well, I don't want to start trying to decide.
But that was, you know, to come along and do something that's pure, you know, that has a commercial sort of flat parapeted roof, and then put a little hat on the end of it to say, oh, we're stepping down, that, I'm very glad that we didn't end up with that result, because the result that is there, even though it's considerably taller, and this is not considerably taller, it just, we didn't have that nod towards, if we just, if we throw something, if you throw a nod towards the fact that it's next to X, then maybe that'll fit better, and thankfully, in that case, we didn't move in that direction.
And I think you all have made a number of good points, and Nick did too. And one that you made early was thinking about what future development's going to look like, and we can't predict the future. But looking at this aerial, you've got two smaller sort of houses on long lots that actually come to the rear of this. Presumably, those will be bigger buildings someday, maybe it's 20 or 30 years, but the natural progression of things usually goes that way. And you have three non-contributing houses across the street. That could very well end up being some sort of larger development as well. So in that context, this would seem pretty appropriate for not precluding that, whereas if it was a bungalow, that bungalow starts to look pretty weird if the rest of the neighborhood grows up around it.
Sean, did you, I think you have some houses, some pictures of houses that are along that...
Yeah. So 1207 is immediately to the right, also zoned commercial. And then they sort of go in order of, like if you're standing on the street looking at this one, they go kind of in the order up to the right.
Did we decide the zoning on, does sort of the commercial zoning turn the corner and go to the alley? Do we know?
So 1205, commercial, 1207, it's a residential form, but also zoned commercial, that's...
It is zoned commercial.
Yeah, it's Beth Haley Studios, I don't know if you're familiar with that business.
I mean, a lot of those are sort of operations.
But the north side of the street is zoned residential.
Okay.
On the setback, and Nick may be able to answer this question, does this proposal kind of go from sidewalk at the commercial corner, this building sets something in between where this is and the adjacent structure?
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of maybe midpoint between the two?
Actually, yeah. Basically trying to make, we had that debate quite a bit, we talked early on, Melissa and I about... Talked early on, I think initially I was working with Melissa on another project and just kind of asked her a general question before we actually made application to this, because we were really kind of debating the appropriateness of what that setback really needed to be to make that transition from the corner commercial building sitting right on the corner, you know, right on the sidewalk, and then there being kind of a really drastic setback, you know, when the residential structures were starting into the neighborhood. So we kind of ended up saying, well, let's just split the difference so we can make a little bit, we can ease that setback and transition. I think you'd mentioned maybe that. I think you'd mentioned maybe that, one of you guys had suggested that earlier, and that's exactly what we did, so. And that was also a function of, you know, really getting parking to work in the rear. Currently, if we had maintained the setback with where it is, there's just really no way to park and certainly don't want to suggest that parking needs to be in the front of the building.
So what is the setback from the sidewalk?
Currently as designed, I think it's 16, 17 feet, I believe. I don't have it dimensioned.
And then the building setback for the homes along there?
Probably 25.
Okay.
I don't have that surveyed, but that was kind of...
Ben, do you have, thinking more about the, I think you used the word oozing, the transition.
Sorry about that.
Do you have any thoughts about the right elevation? Because that's going to, if you come down Linden, that's a big wall and that isn't maybe the best if what we're trying to accomplish is a transition. I realize there's a staircase, I think, there.
Yeah, and I will say, that's purely in reaction to a code requirement.
Because of the staircase?
It has to be a rated wall with limited window, any window openings that are in that stairwell will have to be rated, fire-rated. So there's really not a big opportunity on that elevation, no matter really what it is, really if it's stair or if there's any other program. We actually ran into that on a building in East Nashville where we, you know, the zoning required, the zoning allowed for there to be zero side setback, but no windows opened, no window openings allowed in that with the assumption that another building could be built right next to it with that same setback.
And that is, I mean, in terms of, and I get it, no question about it, one of, I think that would be, I don't know if you can decorate that facade enough to make it less, you know, less...
Sure.
Whether it's brick patterning or anything, not, I'm curious as to, in backing out of space, number one becomes a real challenge, but if the office, you know, if there could be just a little slip and slide in there and it's...
Sure.
There's a lot of planned stuff that's going on, but I think because it only partially sets back, that that facade is definitely visible and you're kind of, you're really stuck there.
I agree. And admittedly, that was probably one of the, at this stage, one of the less studied garages, or one of the less studied elevations.
Mm-hmm.
Because we'd focus so much on the front and the rear and...
Is the...
Certainly deserves more attention.
Is the location drive, well, I'm thinking if you just flip it, but would that make the location drive too close to that intersection?
Hmm. That's an interesting thought. Interesting thought, I haven't thought about that.
And as you come down Linden, you're going to see more window and the other one is just up to the back of the building.
I mean...
Like I said, I don't want to...
I don't really see, the biggest thing that would do, it would, there's currently a drive apron off the street on that side. I think that's primarily one of the reasons we located it there. It's not exactly in that location, it would have to be, and plus, it would have to be redone anyway to meet public work standards, but I don't see really offhand why that couldn't be done. I think that might be something worth...
I mean, that would certainly address the issue from Linden and...
Yeah.
Okay, we could design this building all day long. I don't want to do that.
I do say thank you for pointing that out. Thank you for pointing that out. I do certainly think that's a concern because the setbacks aren't meeting up, that is a very visible facade and I think...
No, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, based on the state of where this is, something maybe not insurmountable, a challenge, never add to the list of challenges you've got to work with there, that if this, if the commission viewed this as, you know, not, were to approve it, that certainly is an area, I think, where that can be addressed or maybe a condition of approval, again.
Mm-hmm.
Not assuming that everybody's thinking the way I am on that one.
Might take a shot at a motion. Make a motion to approve the application with the stipulation that the applicant work with staff to find an administrative solution, a solution that can be approved on administrative basis for the, to mitigate the impact of the right side elevation, including considering a way to get some windows or some other...
Or even mirroring, like Ann had suggested.
Transition material into it.
Because that, I think, could be a pretty viable...
I'm sorry, what was the?
Or even mirroring the plan, like Ann had suggested.
Flipping it.
Flipping the, flipping the plan to where the drive would be on the left, that stair...
Well, I did like that it was stepped in on the right side because the setback of the other house, it sort of helps more with transition.
That was furthering that stepping, yeah.
Yeah. So it's really not quite as bad as it may seem because it's, I don't think there's that much to do there. I just, without exact measurements, I don't know how far that sits out in front of the existing house. But I'm happy to delegate figuring that out to staff and trust their judgment.
Okay, we have a motion. Is that a doable thing with the staff?
Because there was discussion in the middle of that, I'm not sure what the motion was.
Sorry. I'll do it faster and more concise this time, I hope. I recommend approval of the application with the condition that the applicant work with staff on the right side elevation to facilitate the transition from residential form on the adjacent lot to commercial on the other side towards 12th, considering a number of different items that may help with that, including windows, materials, et cetera.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? And...
I think you've got to vote, Ann.
And I've got to vote, I'll vote for it.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just two quick, quick things. One of the things we were going to do today was discuss training, which of course, we will wait till next month to do. But part of that training is what Metro requires for diversity awareness. I have two CDs, if someone wants to take one. You can also get it online, if you've seen that email that I sent. And also, next time, if you would be prepared to vote on a new chair and vice chair. It's that time again. Thank you.